Back here, welcome everyone else. Today is our agenda and our items here for our regular council meeting. We've already got to swear in our newest council member. So most of you guys do know that we've completed a runoff successfully. Anytime you have everyone sworn in and you've got all five together, it feels complete and it feels like it's time to move forward. So we appreciate you all for attending here today. I am going to ask if you guys will go ahead and rise and stay standing for the invocation led by our police chief Jimmy Johnson and then stay standing for the pledges.
Thank you, Mayor, for having me here today to do this. Would you bow your heads with me? Heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts, thankful for the many blessings you have poured out on us, blessings of life, liberty, and community. Thank you for the opportunity to gather here today to conduct the business of our city. Lord, I lift up each member of this council to you, grant them wisdom and discernment, courage and compassion, empathy and understanding as they discuss and decide matters that affect the lives of so many. Their burden is heavy, Lord, give them the strength to carry it. May their hearts be aligned with what is just and their actions guided by what is right. I also pray for this dedicated city staff, those here in this chamber and those serving throughout our community, from the line worker to the city manager and everyone in between. I ask for your protection, strength, and favor over them. May they be equipped each day to serve with integrity and excellence. Father, I also lift up the citizens of our city, those present here today and those in every neighborhood and household. I ask that you bless them with peace, provision, and purpose. Remind us all that though we may differ in our opinion or perspective, we are all created in your image and called to love one another. May our words and actions reflect that love, bringing unity where there is division and honor where there is disagreement. And Father, as we move forward with this meeting and beyond, I just ask that you open our eyes to see what you would have us see, open our ears to hear what you would have us hear, and above all else, Lord, open our hearts to have the compassion for others that you showed for us by the provision of your son, Jesus Christ, so that we may have a path to salvation. And it is in his precious holy name that we make this prayer. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. Do you guys join me with the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, guys. Please be seated. Okay, so we are sitting here with our new council. We'd like to officially recognize and welcome Councilman Prescott, Place Three, to his first business meeting. And with that, we'll kick it off. We'll jump right into business. We're going to run an efficient, effective meeting for you here today and appreciate everyone for showing up and participating, working alongside us. Five A is our Every Drop Counts Calendar Contest winners. And so I'll refer to our staff. It says Andrew on this one. Do we have our Water Utilities Program Manager here? Okay, yes. Can you pronounce your last name for me, sir?
Cook.
Cook, okay, great. It didn't really show up on here. So Mr. Cook, thank you for doing this. Would you mind to go ahead and just walk us into this and let's recognize these individuals?
Sure. Mayor, council members, good afternoon. My name is Andrew Cook and I'm honored to speak with you today as the new Water Utilities Program Manager and head of the Every Drop Counts Program. First of all, I'd like to thank Ben Orr for his years of dedication to this program. Ben made a lasting impact and we're grateful for all he's done as he transitions into a new role within the department. I've been a part of the utility department for nearly six years and serving on the Every Drop Counts Committee has truly been one of the highlights of that time. This program just isn't about art. It's about inspiring awareness and action around one of the most critical resources we have, water. Year after year, the students of Amarillo show us just how powerful their voices can be. This year's calendar contest brought another amazing group of entries filled with creativity, passion, and an understanding of water conservation that gives us real hope for the future. These young artists are helping lead the way, whether they realize it or not, and their work speaks volumes. The 2026 calendars will be available starting in August at Utility Building and City Hall, all library locations, and the Sims Building. We're also deeply grateful to our generous sponsors who donated prizes to our winners. They include Brush With Art, Paccasack, Wonderland Park, Bahama Bucks, the Don Harrington Discovery Center in Wildcat Bluff, the American Quarter Horse Hall of Fame and Museum, and the Amarillo Saad Poodles. And now, it's my pleasure to announce this year's Every Drop Counts Calendar Contest winners. As I call your name, please join me at the podium for a photo. So this year's grand prize winner was Monica Solomon. Our January winner was Ellie Ford. Our February winner, Thomas Hartman. March, Annabella Sanchez. Our April winner, Elena Enriquez. Our May winner, Mateo Solomon. Our June winner, Tierney Rucker. Our July winner, Audrey Droop. August winner, Michael Hartman. The September winner, Emily Rosbrum. Our October winner was Georgie Ford. Our November winner was Keenan Zien. And our December winner was Mateus Solomon. I just want to say a big congratulations to all our winners and participants. You've made a real difference and we couldn't be prouder. Mayor and council, if you would, these kids and I would love if y'all would come down and take a photo.
Yeah, we'll join you down there. If you guys will walk up this way and just line up right here, please. Okay, we appreciate everyone that entered and for all the lovely artwork and appreciate Mr. Cook for running that part of our meeting and letting us acknowledge those individuals. Thank you, guys, for attending. At this time, I'm going to ask if city manager has any announcements? Okay, no announcements. We'll move forward into public comment. Ms. City Secretary, do you mind to read us into public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for participating in today's city council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us and we're glad you're here to share them today. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address city council regarding posted agenda items or topics related to city policy. Every speaker today will have three minutes to address the council. We ask that you stay within your three allotted minutes. When you come to the microphone today, please state your name and whether or not you live within the Amarillo city limits. If you're addressing council on an agenda item, please state your position so we can reflect it properly in the minutes. If you are speaking to an item not on today's agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act limits how elected officials may respond. Council may respond with statements of fact. They may ask the topic be added to a future agenda, or they may refer the matter to the city manager who can have staff step out and visit with you regarding your topic. Again, we thank everyone for being here today. Our first public commenter is Brandon Thrasher. Is Brandon Thrasher here? If not, then Nathan Smith.
While Mr. Smith makes his way forward, we'd just like to clarify, the way that we do public comment here, we ask that you don't have to speak on just an item that's on the specific agenda. You can speak on any item that has to do with city business. So we would appreciate if you'd be respectful of everyone's time here and all the resources that we have and only address city business, things that we are involved in. We appreciate the decorum and your respect. We would ask that you continue to address the council as you're here to address the council, not the staff or anyone in the audience. And so appreciate you, guys, being here. Look forward to the public comment. Mr. Smith, how you doing today?
Not bad. Good afternoon, council. First, I'd like to start with commending the police force who was out to deal with the protest on the fourteenth. They did a really good job handling that and even I have to give them some recognition there. Congratulations, Mr. Prescott. I kind of miss Tom. But anyway, last week I covered the ASH paradigm and then gave you the wrong year for when it came out. That was actually 1951 and then replicated in 1955 and 1956, and most recently by Axel Frazen and Sebastian Mater in November of 2023. Anyway, the reason I brought that up was to point out group dynamics. There's a group of five of you and you all get information from somewhere as far as news goes, but I'm betting you don't have time to vet a lot of your news and you only have selective sources that you trust for news. Now, if our news systems were incredibly non-biased and all just based on ethical journalism, you guys wouldn't have a problem. You'd be able to pay attention to those sources that you trust and probably have a good coverage of what's going on in the world. That's not the reality, though. A lot of our news sources have biased of making money, all that ad revenue. And the way to keep eyeballs on news is to sometimes bend reality, bend to the truth, and our own personal reality. We know what we can see with our own two hands or two eyes and touch with our own hands and yada, yada, yada. We know our personal experiences and that's our personal reality. We don't actually know what's going on in the rest of the world. It's filtered through us through the news sources we consume. Try not to swear. My apologies. Anyway, there's a lot of biased news that we all get and some of us is to the detriment of our community. For instance, we need to replace the water purification systems, filtration. We need to be able to drink water and our infrastructure is breaking down and it needs replaced. Now, there's going to be a financial incentive to go with one plan or another. And just like with that, we'll try to get the cheapest in that case, hopefully, that doesn't give a lot of political kickbacks to our elected officials. The news we consume is all about making money. So I would implore this council to try to find the contrasting opinion when you're consuming news. You obviously have your trusted news sources, people you think aren't going to BS you, and you go to those. Try to find sources that would contradict those preferred sources. Find people you disagree with, and if you disagree vehemently enough, try to learn why they're wrong. Go and do research into why they're wrong. Macro-level events are going to rain a catastrophe down on micro-level politics and it's going to be you five sons of unlucky SOBs who have to deal with the blowback when the macro-level policies start hurting our citizens here. Good luck to you all. I'm out of time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Our next speaker is Chris Pittman. And on deck after Chris will be James Allen.
Afternoon, Chris.
Good afternoon. I apologize, I only had enough to be able to print for the council members. Good afternoon, my name is Chris Pittman. And I'm here today to talk about an urgent safety crisis at an intersection that we're all very familiar with, and that is Loop 335 in Arden in front of West Plains High School. And I'm asking you to direct city staff to reduce traffic lanes and reduce the traffic speed to prevent another accident there. Every 10 days, our city streets kill somebody. That's more than murders. This past Monday, a 15-year-old high school student was almost that person. It is a miracle that he survived, but we cannot continue to rely on miracles and forgiveness. We need to reduce the speed and we need to reduce the speed of lanes to prevent this from happening again. We recently adopted Safe Streets for All. This is an ordinance that directs us and guides us on how we should respond to these types of incidents. It helps us to recognize what streets are unsafe and how to address them, what's used this intersection, this incident, as a time to implement this plan. I appreciate Tech Dot starting a traffic study, but we already know what they're going to find out, that cars that go too fast and crosswalks don't mix. We will know that this intersection is safe when we can go to ballgames and parents aren't whispering about it to each other. We will know it's safe when cross-country team is not running across in fear. We will know it's not, we will know it's no longer safe or unsafe when County Judge Dyer's office stops getting phone calls about it. This is a known problem and has been for years. I appreciate the updated school zone schedule, but we can and need to do more. We need to reduce the number of lanes in each direction from two to one. This will force cars to naturally slow down and it reduces the number of traffic lanes that students must cross to get to school. There are already cones and signage there that simply need to be moved 10 feet. 10 feet is all it would take for us to prevent another tragedy. And if jurisdiction is a concern, which I know this is a Tech Dot facility, I say we prioritize safety and act now. Let's ask for forgiveness and not for permission. Tech Dot, as Mayor Cole, as you know, we go to the NPO meetings together. Tech Dot has their own goal of Vision Zero, of reducing traffic deaths to zero. I'm sure they would agree that reducing traffic lanes and reducing speed limits would align with their own goals and our own goal of Safe Streets for All. I also encourage, and on that handout that I shared, some other ideas that I believe will impact the safety of not just West Plains High School, but all intersections and all school zones throughout Amarillo. I urge you again to direct staff to reduce the speed lanes and reduce the speed limits there at West Plains High School. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Chris.
Next up is James Allen, and on deck after James will be Chad Low.
Good afternoon. Congratulations on your reappointment reelection to the council members that were reelected and congratulations to the new council members. I think I know all of you now. I'm primarily going to speak to you on item 10D, but I want to backtrack and tell you thank you for approving in your last meeting the bus stops in North Heights. But I want to ask yourself to ask a question, why it took four years for a project to come to you for, on two bus stops? As a oversight group, I think you need to ask staff why it took two, four years for that to come to you for approval. That tells me that there's an inefficiency in city staff. But let's get to item 10D. North Heights is a diverse community that seeks equity and inclusion from the city and its spending patterns. The reason I'm for this item is I brought this item to you over a year, a year ago to be placed on the city's agenda. I thank Cole, I thank Les, I think our former council members to push this item. And I really want to thank Jerry Danforth for stepping up and getting this agenda item here. But the million two is going to address an issue that the city has known about for over 60 years. It has never had any meaningful action taken in North Heights. I know I disagree with a couple of staff members, but this is the first time the plan has gone off of someone's desk and into action. So this is definitely something that's past due and I definitely think you should approve it without any questions. And if you noticed the wording on this, this item considers the word of a construction contract for the first phase. So I will be coming back to you and our community definitely expects that you will be approving more funding in the upcoming fiscal year due to increasing costs for various reasons. You'll probably be looking at more money being requested and our community definitely thinks that should be approved. Also, my last item, you've already approved the item for sidewalk repair or construction on Northwest 18th. City staff is allowing that, that construction to be going on right now. Your contractor is pouring concrete, concrete right now on wet ground and while it's raining today. I don't know what concrete does with rain, but we would expect the city to have better oversight. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Chad Low, and after Chad will be Hope Castillo McCoy.
Afternoon, Mr. Low.
How are you, sir? Good. Thanks for listening to me. Basically, I'm going to go along with the gentleman also talking about the intersection. Just a concerned parent, this past week, I'm stationed with the young man that was hit and we got the news at the station and it was pretty alarming. The initial diagnosis was not good. And basically, I'm here to, I called this city a while back and they basically said that that's a Tech Dot issue because of where it's located. So I think y'all would all be on board with what we're trying to do, just provide these kids a safe place. I just want y'all to be a bug in there here with us. You know, last June, Tech Dot celebrated the opening of the loop. It's far from open. Yeah, it makes a circle around the city, but we're working off two frontage roads from Saucy to I-40. And that's all it is. And those speed limits vary from 35 to 70. And once the loop is in, those speed limits will go down to 45 to 55. But right now, they're letting us travel 70. And I understand the reason for a loop. I want the traffic to continue to flow just as like everybody else does, but whenever you got a large school that's right there, I mean, at Housing Edition is 1,500 houses and there's going to have to be kids that walk home from school instead of them playing Frogger. I mean, we got to put something in there that allows them to push a button. I mean, 7:30, 8:30 to have a designated crosswalk, it's not asking much. I mean, that's, I don't, I don't necessarily want a stoplight. A stoplight would be great. I don't think Tech Dot ever going to allow that to happen. But the kids have to have something they can push, stop, stop traffic and get them across safely. I did speak to Jason Bridge earlier today and he said that Tech Dot is in their final stages of the research to put a stoplight there or some type of traffic control there. I asked him when that would be, like a decision on that. He had no timeframe, but other than that, I mean, I just, I just think something has to be done and something soon because we're really, really, really lucky. We're not, the fire department didn't attend a funeral this week. It's just by the grace of God that Landry's still with us. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hope Castillo McCoy.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Bear with me because I just threw the speech together. First, I want to welcome Mr. Prescott, and I don't know if you remember me or not, but you came to a forum out at Pleasant Valley and you spoke with us. So like the mayor said, you've got some pretty big shoes to fill in Tom's place because he was a big voice for the community. But welcome and I hope you'll use your expertise to continue to be a voice for us. I'm here today because I'm upset, not at you guys, not at the city, but because yesterday ASD announced that they found $39 million and they want to use that for capital projects instead of keeping it in the district funds. And I wholeheartedly believe that those funds will not benefit the Northside schools. So I'm here to ask you all, the city council, to please, please look to revitalize all the Northside. Make Amarillo great again, all of it, not just Pleasant Valley, who I've been advocating for, but everything north of I-40. Amarillo started on the Northside. It is the backbone of Amarillo with all its citizens that keep Amarillo running from day to day. For most of us Northsiders, it's not our fault that we've been overran and forgotten. We need help cleaning up the Northside. We need help removing the stigma, oh, don't go to the Northside. Someone asked me the other day, who am I? And I started to say, I'm nobody, but then I realized, I am somebody. I am an Amarillo Texan, United States Texan born, and I have a voice. I have a voice for common people like myself that live in Amarillo, not rich, not poor, just a normal, everyday citizen. And I want myself, my neighborhoods, my neighbors that are like me, born here, raised here, to have a voice, to speak up and be able to say, this is what our neighborhood needs, not, not just the homeless or, you know, people that get certain funds that just normal, everyday citizens don't. So please, in the future, when funds come up, help revitalize the Northside. That's your backyard. Let's be proud of it. Let's clean it up and make it good again, not just the Southside. You have residents, constituents on the Northside also, north of I-40, that are also important. And that's all we ask is just look, look that way sometimes to help us clean up the backyard. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, that concludes everyone that signed up for public comment today.
Okay, thank you, guys, for everyone who spoke. Do I have anyone else here today who would like to offer public comment? Mr. Fisher, please come forward.
My name is Mike Fisher.
My name is Mike Fisher. I live in the city limits of Amarillo. I'm seeing another item, eight K, I think it's on the consent agenda. I'd like for it to be pulled and discussed. So we have two council meetings in a row where we're pulling, where we're paying an outside company to staff people that work for the city. And I just wonder, is that one of the primary jobs of the city manager? Is he not capable of staffing our city? Do we get a discount because he no longer has to staff a certain number of people, and we're going to pay a million dollars with this addition? Now we're going to pay a million a year to outsource employees? So which is it? Do we get a discount on the city manager's salary? Or do we, do we get some sort of trade-off there? Or do we add more tasks to his job? Imagine if Netflix released its schedule the way the city releases its agenda. They drop twenty hours of new content on Friday night, don't tell you what's in it, and expect you to give a detailed review by Tuesday afternoon, three minutes max. That's not Netflix and chill, that's agenda and panic. But that's what it feels like trying to keep up with city government. A few years ago, the council changed, the council meetings from once every week to twice a month, so every other week. So now we've got to look over more, so it doubled the agenda. I asked that you post this, maybe we change the deadline to a day earlier, so we're not scrambling on the weekend, because nobody is. So then you have one day to look over these things, and I think it would help you guys, because people can come to you with things that they find, and you may be able to consider those without having to think about it on the weekend, or cram everything on Monday, or on Tuesday morning when everybody's slamming you with, what the heck's this stuff? The next thing I think you guys should look at is, like, the way that our public comment is. Every, every meeting, somebody says, usually it's the mayor, who says, we can't talk about that, it's not on the agenda. The Open Meetings Act won't allow it. But here's a solution. The city of Houston, that liberal city, here we are, conservative, we project ourselves as that, but we're not doing as much as Houston, Texas. They have, by the time the deadline for post the agenda, if you've registered to speak, your subject goes on the agenda. Then you guys can talk to anybody. So that guy that can't take off of work multiple times to come talk about things, doesn't, you can solve their problem and converse with them if we, if we adopt the same solution that that liberal city of Houston has.
Mr. Fisher, we appreciate the comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do I have anyone else here who would like to offer public comment? Mr. Ford in the back.
Pass out a couple of things. Want to give you?
Yes, sir.
Wait till you get the materials.
Okay, Mr. Ford, you're up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My name is Mike Ford. I'm a resident of Amarillo, and I'm here to talk about two things today, specifically item eight D, which needs to be corrected in your agenda. It was not a work session. It was noted as a special meeting. There's no special meeting noted there for April, June sixteenth, so just want to make sure you correct that in your agenda. And also, I plan to talk on public comment. That means that we can have a conversation, and it doesn't have to be, I am speaking on the agenda, so if you have any questions regarding what I'm saying, it's okay to have a conversation. The first thing that I've given you is a legal analysis, a notification of a defective canvas for place three special election. Mr. Prescott, this has nothing to do with you, it has to do with a problem that staff created. It's an executive summary I'm going to read to you, and I'll let you read the rest, but the canvas conducted on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five by the Amarillo City Council for place three special election fails to meet the requirements of the Texas Election Code sixty-seven double zero four as amended by Senate Bill twenty-seven fifty-three and violates the Amarillo City Charter. This process was procedurally and substantively deficient due to improper delegation of responsibilities to staff and a failure to assemble a lawful quorum of council members. Moreover, misleading legal guidance was provided by City Secretary Stephanie Coggins and City Attorney Brian McWilliams, which contributed to the council's noncompliance. This memorandum serves as formal notice that the purported canvas is voidable and susceptible to legal challenge under Chapter two-two-one of the Texas Election Code and Texas Constitution. So, Mr. Mayor Protem, you had some honest questions, and you were told that quorum is controlled by the state law, which is false. The charter controls that, and you'll know that because of the, of the Death Star bill that was ruled unconstitutional, that charter requirements can override state law. It's up to, it's within the Constitution, it's allowed by home rule. Mr. McWilliams also said that you are here to accept the results, certify the results as they are, and move on. You were also told that. You were not told, you were not told that correctly. You were here, according to state law, to canvass the election and the results, to receive the results and to canvass those results. I've given you the requirements of state law and of the city election. Also, I've given you something to fix that, to cure that. It can be cured by the city council if you so desire, and I would think that, Mr. Prescott, you know, this sort of Damocles hanging over those results, and unnecessarily so, it's a problem created by staff, I would strongly suggest that you look into it. It can be done, and it's simple, and I recommend we fix it. On public comment, as Mr. Fisher said, we don't need to put it on, on the agenda. You can have a discussion. You can have a discussion with me right now. I'm talking about two things on the agenda. If you have any questions, I know that you're told by legal counsel, maybe you're trained by that, it's been that consistently throughout the years, that legal counsel will tell you, you can't have a conversation. If it's on the agenda, you can have the conversation. Mr. Prescott, I know possibly because you chair a state, state board, that you have state counsel there with you who, who tell you what you can and can't do very vociferously. They're not, they're not wallflowers. And so if you're, if you're transgressing the law during those meetings, they will stop you from doing that. It will also not stop you if you're not transgressing the law.
Mr. Ford, we appreciate your comments, and as a statement of fact, I agree with you. We'll take these suggestions to the staff, we'll review, and any appropriate or needed action will be taken. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do I have anyone else here who would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing, oh, go right ahead, sir. Come on up, John.
All right. Kind of excited to be here. I've got an announcement. I will be starting a podcast. Every other Tuesday at three o'clock, everybody can tune in and catch my podcast right here. So for episode one of this podcast, I would like to do a public service announcement. The Amarillo Public Library has invited everyone to come read The Bluest Eye, a highly controversial book that has been removed from many public schools and libraries here in Texas. The Bluest Eye is a sexually explicit, very graphic novel, and when I say sexually explicit, I mean, whoa. The Bluest Eye covers a range of topics including racism, rape, incest, and child sexual abuse. So the, so the Amarillo Public Library would like to invite everyone to come read about the rape of a young black child by her father. The Amarillo Public Library would like to remind everyone that they have this and many other sexually explicit and pornographic books in the library for you and your children to look at, read, or check out and take home. This public service announcement is brought to you by the Public Library, the Librarian, and the Library Board. Moving on, I'd like to address item ten A. This covers an annexation of Atterbury Land located at I-27 and Sundown. This item needs to be removed from the agenda and no action taken on it. It's a bad deal for Amarillo, and it will not benefit the taxpayers in any way. It will be a detriment to the taxpayers forever. I believe this was brought up a week or two ago on the agenda, and both Fisher and Ford spoke out about this and gave a lot of information on this, and I would just like to see that nothing is done on this, because it's an extremely bad idea and a bad deal for the city of Amarillo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redair. Do I have anyone else here today that would like to offer public comment? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close our public comment section. We'll move forward with the rest of our business here today on today's agenda. Item eight is our consent agenda. Council, do I have any questions over the consent agenda, or do I have anything that needs to be pulled off? No? Okay. I'm going to pull item eight K.
You are, okay.
Yes, sir. Did you have anything in addition to that?
Nope.
Okay. I'm going to pull item eight K, remove that from consent, and then I'm going to ask Mr. City Manager, is eight K not ready, or was there a request to just vote on that after a discussion?
No, yesterday I sent an email to the council asking that we pull this item, because we saw some further review of item eight K.
Perfect. Okay. So we'll pull item eight K for a future agenda item potentially, and then we'll ask for a motion on the rest of the consent agenda as presented. Okay, so moved. I have a motion from place three. Do I have a second? Second from place one. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes with a five-o vote. We will now move forward into section nine of our discussion. Council, do I have anything on for any kind of a review? Any questions before we move forward on nine A? No? Okay, we'll move into nine B. Ms. Laura Storrs, if you wouldn't mind coming forward and talking about the check registry and the progress you've made on that, kind of what we can expect.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I wanted just to provide a brief update based on this discussion that we've had ongoing for the last several weeks. I sent emails out to each of you, and Councilmember Prescott, I will send you, I will forward those emails on to you as well, just kind of walking through what our system can produce. We did work through a customization of a report based on some of the feedback we received from council at the last council meeting that we discussed this at. So I just wanted to quickly go through our options and then what our recommendation is at this standpoint. So we covered this last time, a check register, there's a lot of pros to that. It's easy to produce, it's a canned report that comes out of our software. We really don't have any redaction that has to be done on it. It's a very quick turnaround. The drawback on a check register report out of our financial system, it does not include information related to our wire transfers, and then it also obviously does not include information on deposits. We do have a bank account ledger report. The pros on it is it includes all of your forms of payments, including checks, ACHs, wire transfers, and it also includes your deposits. The drawback on it is it is a little bit slower to produce. We actually had to customize this report, and there could be more information that has to be redacted in it. So our recommendation, and we have evolved this policy statement a little bit based on the feedback we received from council, two council meetings ago, what this policy statement is, meaningful transparency leads to greater accountability. Amarillo citizens work hard to earn every tax dollar they send to the local government to ensure open and honest communication with the public. The city will publish information about how and where those dollars are spent. The check registers for all city bank accounts will be posted after a full reconciliation of the bank account has been performed monthly. Then the bank account ledgers for all city bank accounts with expenditures, revenues, and fund information will be posted on a quarterly basis, and then the city will redact any confidential information. So this next slide here shows what we're recommending to do on a monthly basis. So we would perform our bank reconciliation, and then we would produce the canned, canned report out of our financial software. This is just a simple check register. This is the information that our financial software produces. Down below, and I will not read all of this to you, but it's a statement that we plan to, we would recommend putting out on this section of the city's website. It basically states what this report has and what it doesn't have. It also talks about what accounts this covers and which accounts it does not cover. We're recommending to put city bank accounts out there, and there's a handful of those. However, we are also fiscal agents for several of our component units, and we are not recommending to put those out. Those are really information of those entities, and those can be obtained through a public information request. So this statement down here basically states what I just went over, that there's no wires or deposits included on this check register, and this is only covering city bank accounts. As mentioned, this is what we would recommend posting on a monthly basis. Then this next slide is an example of a report that we worked on that is a bank account ledger. So this would be for all city bank accounts. It would not be for any of our component units. It has that same information kind of at the bottom. It talks about, it includes all transactions, so that would be all forms of payment, all deposits, and it, and then it talks about that it does not include information related to our component units or our fiscal agent entities, and that those can be obtained through a public information request. Our recommendation would be that these are posted on a quarterly basis. So it would be a larger report covering an entire quarter, but these take a little bit longer. We need some more time to go through. There could be some redaction that has to be done. So we would recommend doing the check registers on a monthly basis. That gets the bulk of the information out there. This report, we would recommend on a quarterly basis to allow us time to sort through the information, make sure we get any confidential information redacted. But on this report, you will note, and I apologize, I know the print's very small on here, but it does have the distinction between a payment or a deposit, and it does show the fund that it's associated with. So if it's general fund, or if it's water and sewer fund, or the airport fund, and so on. So that would be our recommendation, and I would be happy to answer any questions council has, or if y'all have any feedback, or if we're going, need to go in a different direction, please let me know.
No, we appreciate your hard work on it. I know I met with you about a week and a half ago. So let me summarize, and then you can correct me. If I don't summarize correctly. So monthly, you're going to see the canned check register. So it's just something that comes directly out of our software.
Yes.
You don't have to do a customized report. There's no filter, because I think in that, if you went the extra step to customize and filter it, you might also invite the same speculation of, well, what are you filtering out that you don't want us to see? So I think if we could say, nope, this just comes straight off of the press, it's just, it's what it is, it's raw.
Yes.
But the drawback to that one is it doesn't show wire transfers, and it doesn't show deposits.
Correct.
So for our citizens that want to be able to track both sides of that ledger, incoming and outgoing, you're prepared to put forward a quarterly report in the form of that ledger, and that'll show the wire transfers, and that'll show all deposits.
Yes, absolutely. It'll show checks, ACHs, wires, and then all the deposits. So yes, it'll show all transactions coming in and out of those bank accounts.
Okay. And let me ask you, because we had talked about going backwards as well as going forward.
Yes.
So what would you propose in going backwards with existing data?
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up, Mayor, because we did speak about that a little while back. What we would like to pursue is there is a transparency star program through the state comptroller's office, and one of the requirements, and I hope I'm not mistaken, I'll look back at Katrina, and she can correct me, but I think one of the requirements is that you have, I believe it's thirty-six months of check registers out there. Now, you, some of y'all will remember, because y'all have walked through this path with us, we have switched financial softwares. We went live with a brand-new financial software on January first of this fiscal year, and so, and calendar year. or in calendar year. So what we would recommend, Mayor, to your point, is we would like to work on getting that 36 months going back. However, the bulk of that's going to be out of our old software and we would like to just, well, we're going to have to just post check registers. We don't have a way to customize reports. All of that's historical data at this point, so we would work on just pulling those check registers and getting them posted out there. We will put a statement out there that that does not include the wire transfers or the deposits as well. Then our report starting January of 2025 going forward is what we're recommending here.
Okay, yeah, so that's a good explanation. So moving backward, we would go and grab the data that we have as it sits in the files.
Yes.
And we'd post the previous three years of transactions for anybody who felt like that data might be pertinent to go back through.
Yes, sir.
Now, can you explain the difficulty in going back and grabbing the same type of wire transfer and deposits over the previous three years?
So the problem with it is we have limited capability to go in and basically make customized reports at this point. It is a software that's no longer active and being used and it is no longer being serviced by, it's actually an Oracle product, but it is no longer, it hasn't received updates in a while. And so it's not like we can reach out to a support team through that entity to help us write a customized report. So what, as mentioned, we would like to post what's available so we can be in compliance with the transparency star program, but then we would produce even more information out of our new software, which is also another reason that we wanted to change financial software is because this new software is much more robust. We have a lot more reporting capabilities than our previous software did.
So I think, I think the conversation that you and I had is, is one where we were talking about kind of the danger of doing the right thing and still ending up where we're in the wrong, you know? And so it's like, well, now, now we showed all this data and it caused issues and the way that we really avoid that is we just make sure that it's raw data and we put it all out there. And if we withhold any of it, then, you know, it can be that speculation that causes us the hardship of, well, we probably shouldn't have tried that hard, right? And so I don't know, I'd like to hear from council, maybe going back three years is good and that additional data is good to provide. We don't, we have the option not to do that. We have the option just to move forward from January on because it will show all check registers in and out, it'll show the wire transfers and it'll show all the deposits. And so as those of you citizens that follow along with budgets and kind of see where the money's going, you're going to be able to verify, validate some of that stuff. Is there a way to go and pull that data in lump sums just in the end of the year on those previous three years? Or would you only be able to provide the previous three years of check registries? Because any kind of incomplete data is going to give us the wrong answer for a verification exercise because you're not going to have the wire transfer.
I think that, I mean, I would have to, I'd have to work with our IT team to determine what we could even extract out of that software. I mean, we could certainly extract like account ledgers. I don't know that it would have the kind of information that we're able to provide through our new system. It may be relatively vague, if that makes sense. And so I, I mean, I could certainly do some research on it if, if you would like. We were just hoping to try to be in compliance with the transparency star program and that says check registers. And so a check register is a canned report that comes out of your financial software. To your point, Mayor, that there's not a way that anything can be omitted or changed or anything because it is a standardized, you know, report that's generated from your financial software.
Okay.
And we could also, I mean, we could start, to your point as well, we could start with January of 2025, building forward until we got to 36 months and then we could look at applying for a program like that if, if that brought another level of comfort to council.
Well, and my expectations may have been a little low. I figured we would request this. It would take 90 days before we got the ability to put them up. We'd start putting them up, they'd be about a 90-day delay and that it would just be moving forward. So when you presented the look back, I was pleased, you know, that's more information than I thought we were going to get. But I'm a little, and I'd like discussion briefly from council because I'm, I'm a little apprehensive to put up half the data and then to kind of be subject to, well, you know, we can't see this, we can't see that. And so I think then what we're doing is we're inviting the FOIA requests of show us your deposits for, or your income, all your revenues for '24, or show us the revenues for '23. So you would be able to do that on a, on a FOIA, right? You would, you would be able to comply with that somehow?
Yes, yes. It might not be in a very pretty format, but yes, we absolutely can produce information.
So I think if, if I were looking at it, I would ask for kind of all or none, but I'll take direction from council in what you guys think is good. I would hope to go back the full 36 months and move forward. I like your plan. I've, I've looked at the template, the formatting is fine. I like the fact that it comes straight off of the software, it's raw. But I don't want to put out half of the data for the past three years and exclude the other half simply because I think the speculation is, is that we're now hiding something. And so, you know, if we're not going to put it all out, let's not put any of it out except for moving forward. If we have the ability to do it though, I think this council, based on this discussion and direction, might see the value in that, so I'd open it up for discussion. Councilman?
So could we, so with the current system, we started using this fiscal year, correct?
Yes, January 1st.
So would it be possible without a lot of additional work to be able to go and go retroactively back to the first of this fiscal year for the, and post the monthly check ledger? And then I guess we would be at three quarterly reports at this point?
Yes, and we would, so the first three months of check registers are going to look different than all the check registers going forward because the first three months were in our old software. Then, then we started the beginning of our second quarter, which is January 1st of 2025 in the new software. And that's also, I think, something that's going to potentially create some questions just because they're going to be the same reports but out of different software, so they're going to look and feel different. We, like I mentioned, we could certainly work with our IT team to see what we could work through to pull out of like the first three months to see if we could come up with a quarterly report that has all that. But again, it's going to look and feel different than it does starting January 2025 and going forward. So we could certainly look into that, though.
Well, I think one of the benefits of is, I mean, if you were able to get at all of it, then, you know, because part of the value of it is doing comparisons. And so, you know, if you had a full fiscal year of the '25 fiscal year and all the data was the same, but I do agree, I mean, you could wind up getting really messy depending if something's coming out of another, particularly if you're trying to do comparisons or those types of things, plus, you know, the additional work, so.
And, and I don't know that we can extract the data in the same, similar format as far as fund and then separating out supplier versus employee versus customer, kind of like we had, and then splitting the payments and deposits in separate. Our old software does not have that capability. It would have the same information, but it would be in a very different format and it would not probably be as user-friendly. Like you wouldn't say, well, here's all the deposits. It would be more of, well, all the debits, you know, are more the deposits and all the credits are more, and that's then getting into the accounting world. So, I mean, we could certainly do it and we could run through a few things. I'm looking at Rich because he's got a phenomenal team that might can help us get the first quarter, but going back over the 36 months to try to produce that exact same data in a usable format might be a little tricky.
Well, I mean, I, I think going back to the point at which you could, you could have data that's going to stand the test of time. I mean, you could do a whole lot of work. I mean, we've already put a lot of work into this as we should, but, you know, if we go back to when all the system, when we started all the same systems, I think it's going to be a way to take, it's going to make people, easier for people to extract information as well and do comparisons when everything is accounted for the same way.
In a similar format, yes, sir.
What would be the export capability and what formats can you, will you be able to export what's in this in an ESV or how will, you know, how will I be able to extract information out?
So what our recommendation is for these reports out of our new software to be in a searchable PDF, PDF format. That's, that is the plan at this point.
Is there?
Are you looking for something else?
Well, I just wonder, I mean, is there any reason why it couldn't be exported into a CSV or an Excel spreadsheet? The only reason why I ask is, and of course, you know, I guess, I guess you can convert a PDF into an Excel, but I just wonder if, I mean, but if it's, if you can, if I can extract it out of that, if I'm just looking at things and I want to sort things and I want to say, I want to, you know, instead of, you know, because you're providing something that's just monthly, I mean, and it's a chronological order, but if I want to look at things and say, hey, I want to look and see all the money that was spent in this area, I mean, it would, you know, make it pretty easy, easier to be able to do that.
Where you could filter it.
If it was a CSV or just to be able to manipulate the data so that you could sort it in a way that would work for you unless there's some reason why, you know, we would not want to do that.
Yeah, and I think that's a great question. I believe we can do it in an Excel format, sorry. And I keep looking back at my expert back here, Katrina. I think we could most likely do it in an Excel format, so I will, I will check into that and I'll confirm that. That way there are options, sorting, filtering, all of those kind of things as well.
Right, good, thank you.
Yes.
Councilman?
I think, you know, if we're going to do the 36 months, if we're going to go back to 36 months, I would just say resource-wise, I don't know if it's worth, you know, trying to compile, getting the deposits and the ACHs if it's not doable, but maybe post it with a disclaimer of saying this is when, you know, it's, the format is different, you know, this is going to look different, maybe with just a disclaimer on there. But moving forward to go with what your, your plan is, is to be fully transparent to say, hey, or even back to '25, you know, January of '25, to show the, the raw data, the one that just prints straight, so it's unedited, unanything, so we know it's fully transparent, and then come back quarterly and do the.
Okay.
The, I mean, that's just my opinion. I don't know that, and to Mayor's point, I don't know, you're saying if it's, either do the 36, but go forth with the effort and show in the ACH and doing what you can, but I think that, to your point, it leads to, I don't know how good that looks. I mean, it, it could be convoluted. Or you're saying, don't even put the 36 up at all. Is that what you're saying? Like it, for what you're saying is, it's all or none on the, on the going back 36 months, is that correct?
I think it goes to like, posting half of the data, let's just say half is a rough percentage, so you're not going to show the wire transfers, you're not going to be able to show the deposits. If you, if you don't do that, I think all you're doing is waiting on the request. I think the request is coming at that point of give us all of that and so.
That request can come anyway, right?
It can come anyway.
But I think, I think with, if it, if it doesn't require a lot of effort to just go ahead and do that, because I think it's good to show the 36 months with that disclaimer of saying this doesn't show the ACHs or the wire transfers, but moving forward as of January 1st of 2025, they will.
Yeah, and, and my, my direction is more like show it all, so my preference is to show it all. I love the 36-month look back, I just want to show all of it. And then I really like the way we're moving forward and I, I like the fact that we're going to show it all. And, and that that way the, the critical eye can, can take their time going through it and I like Councilman Simpson's point as well, being able to kind of extrapolate some of that data and look at it. But my, my only assumption would be if we don't do it, we're, we're just going to wait on somebody to ask for it, so I'd just assume for this to ask for it.
Okay, and the more I'm thinking about this, in our old system, if we post a bank account ledger, it, the, the way that the system was set up, it produces essentially automatic entries that post into the bank account ledger, so you're going to just see these cryptic line items without any identifiable information on most. Most of the deposits go in with just kind of a number and so you're not going to see supplier information. The check register will show that, but the bank account ledger will not show any of that. So what I might do, if you guys are okay with this, I could run a report and send it out through an email for y'all to look at and, and we may need to discuss this again before y'all make a final direction on if you want to go back to 36 or not. So I, I do agree with you, it's best to put everything out there. My concern is with everything out there, I don't know how useful any of it's going to be.
Sure.
So can we move forward with, you know, I know we've had some citizens ask of, you know, I made the request, you know, why is this taking so long? Can we move forward, can, you'll be in agreement to say, hey, let's move forward with current year, you know, go back to January? Let's, let's get that rolling as we decide about the look back of 36 months. We can kind of go through that, see what Rich and his team can do, but let's go ahead and start being transparent with current year back to January 1. I mean, would that make?
No, I think that's a good lead and no reason not to treat them as almost two separate tasks, right?
Y'all are good with that? If, if that's the case, we will work on getting that turned around just as soon as possible then. And then I'll do some research and provide some more examples through emails for you all to kind of look at the reports we can produce out of the old system and then we can bring this back up for more.
Real good.
Direction.
Councilman Reed, I know you got something and then I'll jump back to Prescott.
No, I agree with everything that's been said. I like the idea of getting that data out as soon as we can, starting in January, so it's a good spot.
Okay.
All right.
Councilman, what'd you have?
The 90 days or the half year that we have now, get that data out and then get it compiled correctly because, I mean, a data dump of this size is going to be hard. It's going to be very hard to look through.
Right.
Needs to be clarified.
Okay, so let's set an expectation if we could. Ms. Storrs, what do you think the, the timeframe needs to be before you'd be willing to do that one, knowing that we'd have about a 90-day delay before you did the ledger?
So I think we could start with the first few months of the calendar year, the information out of our new system. We could get that turned around. I've got to work with OEI, with Kristen and her team to make sure that we have the page set up where it's in a usable format. I would imagine we could probably turn that around within the next week or two is what I would imagine. And then to get us caught up, again, we need some time to reconcile those bank accounts and then as soon as they get reconciled, then we would put that out there. So I would anticipate for sure we would have the first quarter of 2025, so March, you know, January through March out there within the next couple of weeks and then we'll start progressively building out. And then in the meantime, I'll send you all examples of the reports out of our old system to, that we can talk about maybe at one of the next council meetings.
Now, when you say that you'd have these ready in the next two months for the first quarter, because we're going to do the ACHs and wire transfers quarterly, would that include those as well?
Yes.
Okay, so it'd be all the reconciled statements with the ACHs and wire transfers?
Yes, for January through March to start with, yes.
Okay, just trying to set expectations.
Thank you.
Very good.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Storrs, very good. We appreciate your work on it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving us forward, we'll move into item 9C, discussion on time-restricted parking. Mr. Freeman?
Yes, sir. This will be hopefully a brief discussion. We're coming to council today to talk about formalizing an update to an ordinance based on a slight pilot program we're running right now. As you're all aware, Potter County is currently demolishing their old courthouse, which has eliminated a lot of their off-street parking. So one of the concerns we heard a lot about from the county was related to juror parking specifically with those that are coming down to, to do their civic duty of serving on a jury. It's not their choice to come downtown should they be penalized for parking on street and exceeding the time limits because they are not able to go in and out to move their car space to, to avoid getting that citation. So the city manager authorized the pilot program with Potter County, which we have basically allowed them to collect the information from their jurors with that proof on their daily rolls, provide to municipal court, and we're able to waive those that are serving in jury duty. What we'd like to discuss today are a few more ordinance discussions, also get additional feedback. Most recently, right after the last council was elected, we repealed the paid parking program and there was some language that we had in there per state law that allowed some exemptions to paid parking and time-limited parking within that zone related to handicapped and disabled and then a number of disabled veterans and the different distinguished honors you might get in the military. Looking at our current code, we have a few veterans exemptions, but we do not have anything for handicapped, disabled placards. So that's one thing we'd like to talk about, possibly adding to current ordinances that if you have a placard for disabled or handicapped, that you would not be held to those time-restricted spaces. And then also the discussion of formalizing jury duty, which in this case, it's not something that you can hang a placard in or have that identification up front, so would likely be working with legal to identify somewhere in the ordinance as far as making it a affirmative defense or an option that they could turn in that proof to municipal court to get that citation waived. I tried to do some research to see if any other cities have considered something like this, haven't found any quite yet. Most have parking on-site, off-street parking, or they may even charge parking in parking garages. I've found some counties that have done that, but we thought it might be worth trying here locally to see if this is accepted well, if it causes a traffic pattern difficulty for us downtown, if we see an influx of jurors. if we see an influx of jurors taking all the on-street parking that might interrupt businesses. We don't, we don't anticipate that being a challenge, just due to the locations of the courthouses, whether it's municipal court, federal, or county. They're not surrounded by as many businesses as, say, Polk Street, so we think it'd be worth trying to formalize this and seeing if it might be an acceptable option for downtown. And then other than that, if there's any other ideas while we're visiting this topic, if there's other exceptions or topics you might want to cover related to that downtown parking ordinance.
Ideas, thoughts, Councilman?
So, for the, for jurors.
Grab that mic real quick.
For the jurors coming in that are out there parking, you know, some places, they just go in and get the ticket signed, stamped?
So the, the concept we were talking about with Potter County is they bring in and basically give them a copy of their citation, and then they'd be able to document on their roles and, and basically correspond it with a name, because we can't just go off a license plate. They may be driving a car that they don't have registered under their name. So to give us a little extra documentation to know who that citation ties to that showed up for jury duty. But as far as if it's municipal court, if they could follow up with the summons or paperwork that they receive when they responded for jury duty, that would be enough for municipal court to, to waive that for someone that's not going to Potter County. That was just something that Potter County wanted to do, to go above and beyond instead of making the, the jurors at Potter County do all that additional legwork since their parking got eliminated. They thought they could help out by trying to coordinate getting that information to municipal court.
So, so now, how, how did this request, I mean, what, what call, what's, what the timing on why this?
So the main timing is that Potter County demolished their, is in the process of demolishing their old district courts building, and that is where they also had about 150 parking spaces off-street for employees and juror parking. Now that that's all been fenced off and eliminated, they're seeing complaints and increase in concerns as far as accessibility for jurors, accessibility for nearby parking, and, and challenges as far as them being able to come and attend their juror duty summons.
And then, so what are they, what's going to happen with that property?
So, once they demolish it, they're going to build a new parking lot. So that whole city block north of the courts building will be parking, but I believe it's a 10-plus month project to complete.
Okay. But if we put an ordinance in as something that's permanent?
Yes, we, we, in our discussions, we, we recommend making it permanent because it is someone coming down, not at their own free will, it's more their civic duty that they have to come downtown to, to perform that service. So we thought it might be an acceptable waiver of those parking restrictions, similar to the handicap or disabled veterans or some of those other distinguished service awards and medals.
So how many people are there? I mean, how many people are they, do we know how many people they're pulling on a daily or weekly basis that are having to come down for jury duty?
They've gave us numbers, it depends on the, the week and the type of, of jury duty, but they can have hundreds in certain time periods, is what I understand.
Well, have they, have they reached out to other property owners or those that have parking lots? I mean, is, the last I heard that, believe it or not, parking is still the number one land use of downtown. There's plenty of parking now that may not be within five feet of the entrance of the, but have they worked with any other property owners or those that, that have places to park?
Yes, we visited with Judge Tanner, she had reached out to some adjacent properties. A and B has property to the west, had a handful of spots that were available for rent. I think they reached out to another property that looked like they had available parking, but they weren't willing to, to work out a lease arrangement. And then we also shared that we have the Liberty Theater lot, the library, Civic Center lots, but they're all three or four blocks away, so that wasn't appealing to, to at least the majority of those involved. We also shared that for their employees as well. They have 150 parking spaces in the, in the paid parking garage that they have access to, but they have employees currently not using the parking garage, they are parking on street as well.
But then once, once they tear down the building and turn the rest of it into a parking lot, the parking's not going to be an issue?
Should be less of an issue. I, I think you'll still have, I don't think they've got enough for all their employees and jurors, so you might still have some that park on street. But yes, it should be less of an issue. Yes, sir.
You just said you have 150 spaces in the?
For their employees.
That are not being used?
I think they're using them more today than they have been in the past few years, but yes, typically they weren't being used. But they, they, they receive those parking spots as part of funding a portion of the parking garage construction.
So has Judge Tanner advised her employees, maybe start using the ones that are allocated?
Yes, she has.
That, therefore, we see the more use of it today?
Yes.
Did, did that alleviate the problem?
No, no. And we've also, the two-hour time parking around the courts building came down during construction, did not get put back up, so that's something else we're going to have to resolve, because right now it's no time restrictions immediately surrounding that courthouse.
Okay, but so for the jurors, we still need a, we still need a solution for the jurors that are having to come down. That's the whole point, correct?
Yes, that is the main reason for the discussion today.
Because they're coming not, like I said, not to go eat or shop or anything?
Right.
They're coming down there because they have to.
Yes.
But yet, right now, they're being, it's being enforced, and they're getting a ticket, they're receiving a citation.
They're receiving a citation while they're in the building for jury duty, yes.
So that's where we need to find.
So we're, we are trying to be helpful and find solutions that might work for both us and the county for permanent options that might be acceptable.
Mr. Mayor, it's, it's hard enough to get folks to show up for jury duty. I think we should make the exception. It's not a long-term issue, it's a short-term issue. Parking will be restored once the building's down. I think we should make a, an exception for jury duty participants. If I had a motion on that, I'll make it.
I agree. Let's, uh, let's explore the few other items on this first.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know if we need to put it into an ordinance permanently for a temporary solution, and, I mean, not to, but, I mean, I guess they've known for quite some time that they were going to have this parking shortage, and they tear the building down.
Yes, sir.
And, I mean, there is plenty of parking downtown. I mean, it, it, yeah, it may not be within 10 feet of the entrance of it, but it's not like it's a mile or two away. But, so I, I don't know, I, I think I would be hesitant to start, because you are looking at businesses and other things that, I mean, the reason why you have these is to keep, you know, premium parking that's along streets open for other businesses, other people to come. And if you've got 150 jurors that are taking up spots around Napples or somewhere else, it's just, you know, it's causing, you know, jam on their, their customers. So, I mean, I, I don't know if there's just, if it's impossible for them to find any other, you know, parking spaces or to come up with alternatives to, you know, to help that. I, I agree that it's hard to find jurors, but I'm, I don't know if we need to be putting an ordinance in to making, you know, more exceptions for more vehicles to be able to, to have that, if, if there's not a way that Potter County can maybe look at potentially solving the problem themselves.
Well, and I'm, I'm with you, Councilman, on, it really isn't a long-term problem that I think we're, we're facing. I think it could be short-term, but 10 months is long enough that we don't want to create the logistical nightmare of having to deal with, you know, who did or didn't show up for court and who got a parking ticket that shouldn't have. So, the other thing is, I've got a few business owners that now that we are enforcing parking on a timely engagement. So, just to recap, we had paid parking downtown, and previous council did what I thought was best for downtown, and removed the paid parking and just implemented timed parking. And so we had a 15-minute, one-hour, two-hour timeframe, depending on business owner preference. Some, like the dry cleaners, you know, they need a 15-minute limit, they don't need a two-hour time limit in front of the dry cleaner. So they could request, they, they wanted all of the parking in front of their business to be 15 minutes. And then you had restaurants, well, they don't need a 15-minute, you know, Napples needs a, a two-hour, or whatever they would request. So we, we solved some problems, but then with the courthouse, we'll alleviate some of that, I think, once the, the new parking is, is completed. But I still have business owners that are reaching out now that we're enforcing, and they're saying, hey, I own this business, I've always parked here, I park here for, you know, four or five hours, I leave for lunch, I come back, and, and I, I have a ticket in front of my own parking. And so, is there a willingness for council to solve that problem for business owner to, to have a variance for that business owner? So if, if I'm the business owner, I understand that if somebody else has parked there and I have no time restriction, they can stay there all day. They may be staying for the weekend at, you know, the bar field, and I can't ask them to move their car, and there's no enforcement. It would, it would go to allow the business owner a little bit more of those rights and those controls of what's directly in front, and I'm talking just right in front of their, their property, adjacent to the property on the curb. But then, I would be in favor of just alleviating the timed parking issue everywhere that we could, anywhere that, that we have control over existing areas, like the timed parking all the way around the courthouse. Old courthouse, you're saying, is not being enforced right now?
Right, there's no signage, and it's become a big problem because people park there all day.
Yeah.
And there's no telling if it's an employee, or if it's a citizen, or juror, it's just whoever shows up can park there all day.
So in the, in the request for an ordinance, putting something in that's longstanding, explain to me, Mr. Freeman, the benefit with, with adding the additional language for some of these exemptions. That, that would be something that'd be longstanding. So if I'm a disabled vet, you know, I don't, I don't worry about timed parking at all in Amarillo.
Correct.
But I get a placard.
Yeah, if you have a placard, that's just, the person out there writing tickets will see that placard and know. The only difference with jury duty is you find out after the fact, and they'd have to turn something into municipal court to prove that they had jury duty. That's the only difference. But another request we had was Potter County would love just to have full access to those spaces and get rid of all restrictions. But I, I think that would backfire most likely.
And, and why do you, why do you think that would cause us the issues just for the next 10 months? Because I think we would be alleviating a lot of those once the new parking was there. So if we just removed timed parking for, for a short period of time, just on all of the street parking right adjacent to the courthouse and the old courthouse, that would free up a lot of space?
Maybe 100 spaces or so. But I don't think they'd be used for jury duty. I think they'd be used for hotel guests and other, other patrons downtown. There'd be no way to enforce it.
What, what about, what if we designated parking spaces just for jurors for this 10 months? By put up a thing?
Put up jury signs?
Yes.
You'd still have the catch that we'd have to cite them to prove they're jurors. Some way to know who's the jurors they are.
Okay.
Yeah, you wouldn't know upfront. And someone, if, if you use placards, is it a placard from yesterday's jury duty versus today?
Right.
The logistics can become a challenge.
Well, in the immediate, I think if we encourage the use of the 150 spots that are in the parking garage for all staff.
Right.
And then, we, we go ahead and voluntarily, you validate and you dismiss the citations. So you would, you would have the communication issue from the court, where they would need to tell you when you come in, hey, thank you for serving today. If you get a ticket, don't worry, bring it to us, we'll validate it, it will be dismissed.
And we're basically doing that now. That's kind of the pilot program. So if council's okay with us continuing that, there's no reason to formalize anything per se until we get more data to see if, if this works.
So, let me take, let me take two more steps with this, just in compartmentalizing it. I'm compartmentalizing staff, solved with the 150 spots that we have, hopefully, parking garage adjacent. Jurors dismissing all the tickets, they park where they need to, because they probably already did, and they didn't see that, you know, it was being enforced and we hadn't traditionally enforced that timely. The next one would be business owners. I don't know if, if council would have any willingness to allow a business owner to remove or to set the time that they would like. So if I am the dry cleaner, I definitely don't want mandatory two-hour parking in front of my dry cleaner service where I can't service my customers. I need a 10-minute or a 15-minute. So we would allow a process for a request to be given by the business owners in lieu of a variance. So if I'm the other business owner that I, I really don't mind if somebody parks there all day, but the maximum time is four hours or whatever, you know, we would allow, at least then we're working with those small businesses downtown. That would be the third one. And then the last one would be incorporating what you're bringing forward, like disabled vets or veteran of foreign wars or whatever on the placard. I don't see any, any harm in putting something out there if we're already going to make a change in an ordinance. Now, I might side with Councilman Simpson, I don't know that I'm up for working an ordinance through if, if all I'm doing is just this one item. I, I would kind of want to tackle it all, if we were going to go through the, the issue of an ordinance. Councilman?
Question, why can we not increase the spots at, across the street to 250?
In the parking garage?
Yeah.
We are pretty limited, and I don't think the county is willing to pay our lease pricing for more parking spots for employees. But we are pretty limited on parking now, because we have Pantex that leases out the top deck, we have a lease with the hotel and, and other tenants.
So there's no spots available?
There'd, there'd be a handful, but it'd be mostly for employees. It'd be a little tougher to try and validate jurors parking in the garage.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
It's a good question. Councilman Simpson, do you have anything else to add?
No, I, I just wonder if there's, you know, I, I agree, I don't, I don't necessarily know of putting in something short, this is a short-term problem for them. You know, I, I don't know whether, I mean, I know they've looked at certain businesses that are closer, but if you do look, I mean, there is public parking that's available in other areas. I don't know whether the WT parking lot is too far away, or there's others, but there is, you know, I don't know whether they can, I mean, people don't have to park there, but it's other parking that is available, letting people know what public parking, you know, may be, if they don't mind walking a, a little bit. So, just, just a thought.
Anything on this, though? Would council be willing to allow a process by request only from business owners to expand or customize that time? Maybe, maybe it's less time. Do we have anything like that in, in place already, Mr. Freeman?
Not historically. It's, these times on the West Side have been particularly set just based on historical patterns of those businesses. We have talked about trying to formalize a process to do that, whether it's trying to be more consistent. So like, north-south two hours, east-west one hour. I think if you get a patchwork of so many different ones, it can be tough to enforce, and you'll have signs back to back which ones what. But I think it would probably make sense for us to work on a, a process on how that would look to make those changes. I wouldn't really recommend it being based on the business owner's parking per se. I think downtown public streets are usually for the customers and the citizens that pay for those streets and use those streets and try and access the businesses. If it turns into employee parking, I think you'll open up other challenges. If you're just trying to eliminate, or if you're trying to reserve it for a particular business, but it, I think it's a much larger conversation than we came prepared for today to discuss, but could happily tackle that one.
Understood.
If that's a priority.
Does, does council have an appetite for getting into an ordinance in order to pull in some of the military exemption? Otherwise, I think we're just going to give direction here based on the juror issue.
I didn't understand your question.
So does council have an appetite to take on the rewrite of an ordinance in order to create a placard that exempts military personnel from parking time limits?
So we're not doing that currently?
We're not doing this currently.
We, we have a handful of exemptions, but not as, as extensive as that list that you see on the screen that we previously had. And then our current code does not have the general handicap, disabled exemption. So that, that's currently missing.
I, I would support that.
You support that. Anybody against working on this exception in an ordinance? No? Okay. Then I think what we would really do, let's not deal with the business owner yet, let's try to take those on one at a time. Because I think you're right, I think blanketing everything is probably the more problematic, and, and some of those businesses probably have other extenuating circumstances of an adjacent parking lot or something else. But then, I think if we've encouraged the staff at the county to park in the 150 available, then if you have a good system in place, and we can assure our, our friends and neighbors at the county that those are going to be dismissed, then we just enforce as normal, validate those, dismiss the parking ticket, and, and we can move forward with this on, on an ordinance revision.
Okay. Sounds good.
Anything further, council? Okay, hopefully that'll be all the direction we need on that. Appreciate the discussion, though. Item 9D is a request for future agenda items. Do I have anything from council that you would like put on the next agenda? No? Okay. What'd you say?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. It is 4:30. We're going to take a 10-minute, 12-minute recess. We'll come back and we'll handle our non-consent items, and then we'll wrap for the day. Thank you, guys. We'll come back and we'll handle our non-consent items and then we'll wrap for the day. Thank you, guys. Appreciate everyone. Getting back where you're going, we, uh, running a successful meeting here today. It's only 4:45. We're jumping into our non-consent portion of the agenda. Item, uh, that's up first is item 10A, second reading for annexation in our tiers three zone.
So, so Mayor, this one was put on non-consent because it wasn't a majority, I mean unanimous vote last meeting. So by our policy, it was put on non-consent for the second reading. We do have planning staff here available if you have a specific question, or I can try and answer any questions you might have as well, um, based on last meeting's discussion.
Yeah, and I, I actually appreciate the fact that it is on non-consent because I don't think that I did maybe the best job in the, in the previous meeting in, in, you know, in kind of discussing exactly what we're here to do. And so I think in the previous meeting, you know, I kind of got pulled backwards to three years ago. And, you know, who drew the boundary and was the boundary drawn this or that? And, and so really what, what we're here to do today is to say yes or no to annexation.
Yes, sir.
So you could say no, we don't want you to annex. We don't want your services. We don't want the housing. We don't want the businesses. We don't want the property tax, the sales tax. We don't want the additional users on the system, sewer, water, trash. You could say that.
start to rebate some of that back for the infrastructure.
And do they get a check or is there a rebate that comes off of their taxes that are owed like the next year?
It ends up being a check from the holistic zones revenue source, so it won't just be their property tax, it's, it's the zone as a whole.
Okay. And so like you, you have a large chain grocery store that wants to come to Amarillo. We hadn't had them here, but you've got like this tiers three zone and, and really what's keeping them from coming is, well, we don't want to pay for a mile of, you know, water sewer line to get there. Otherwise, you know, if the services were there, we'd come there. Now we have a mechanism that if that water sewer line needs to get placed there, you know, either to the developer or the business owner, or everyone within that zone can benefit from that.
Yes, sir.
What about sales tax?
Sales tax go completely to the city and as well as the county because the new annexed area does have a half cent that goes to Randall County.
Okay, so your, your half cent goes to Randall County for their public service district?
Yes, sir.
Or public safety district maybe is it's allocated.
Assistance district for fire.
Then you also have monies that are going to the AEDC?
Yes, sir.
For future growth and other projects that we're doing out there. And then all the sales tax that we normally would get come, well, I shouldn't say all, the remaining amount of sales tax we normally get, they come to the, the general fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there, there's not a keeping of the sales tax within that. And, and so in this particular zone with I-27, with a large family friendly kind of park, sporting event district that's right there, venue that's there, everything that we see kind of on that I-27 loop, the traffic counts, the demographics largely support good hotel growth, restaurants, other amenities and things that are going to grow based on the rooftops that are around it. So, I mean, Amarillo, it's, and it's funny, and here's why I like this conversation. Man, y'all do something to help us grow. Okay, done. I got a mud idea. What if we do a mud? Like, well, we can put this and we could try that. There's a tool somebody could use, right? Well, we don't like that. You know, I mean, that's government getting involved, doing all this other stuff. Well, I thought you said do something. Okay, well, how about a tiers? You know, what if we do a tiers and we, and we, we keep the money right there so that growth pays for growth? You know, it's, it's not, it's, it's not your guy over in Wolfland who's paying for all of the infrastructure needs that are going south, right? It's the guy on the south side of town that's paying for those infrastructure needs that we need. So I, I liked the conversation. I just felt like it was a little one-sided last time. And, you know, our, our enterprise funds, sewer, water, those additional users, I mean, Mr. Griffith, am I correct, there's 1,600 houses scheduled over there or is it more than 1,600?
That's pretty close.
Pretty close. So 1,600 rooftops that show up, and then what would you say in commercial pad sites? Like 100 commercial pad sites, more, less?
The delivery plan has 160.
160 commercial pad sites. And then the tiers will exist for how long, Mr. Freeman?
20 years.
20 years. So we're really playing long ball here. We're saying on the front end, like, we need a 50-year plan here to continue to grow and annex, and we need all this infrastructure that we can't afford. I can't just go grab $50 million and put it on the south side of town and not do what we did earlier, you know, with James talking about the first million dollars that's going into North Heights and another million to follow that. We've got to work with the tools in the toolbox. And so you can't just have a hammer for every job. The hammer's not the thing that's going to turn the screw. So like at times you need this tool and at times you need the other tool. And so the, the criticism comes from, you know, it's, it's, there, it just has to be the old way, and the old way doesn't really work for 110 square miles of an incorporated area like we see here in Amarillo. And we're not raising your taxes more than that small amount that we get for kind of our inflationary increase. So that would really be the other way to do things is, you know, try to go out and borrow a billion dollars and we're just not willing to do it. So we're, we're gaining some ground here on, on what we've got there. 1,600 houses, 160 pad sites, and, and we're, we're not in a position to see a developer come along and just do all of the work because the land costs and construction cost is gonna, is gonna incentivize that kind of payout. Like, over the long term, we think the, the land appreciation will have a benefit. Hey, God bless the developers and, and everybody that, that gets involved over there. I, I don't have a problem with capitalism. I hope you guys don't either as some red-blooded American conservatives. We, we ought to want capitalism. We ought to want to see businesses come to town and be profitable. Because when they're profitable, we're profitable. Those sales taxes come based on a form of profit. They had to ring that register. So, gentlemen, we're not here to talk about whether the boundaries were drawn correctly and they could or could not have been appropriated in, in this unimproved piece of land, which legally I'm fine with. I sat on that council and, and it's an unimproved, unimproved piece of property. It has some issues with flooding. It has some issues with drainage. It has some issues with infrastructure that wasn't put in. It has text dot and all sorts of other encumbrances over there. So yes, it's not the typical downtown rundown, let's say, crime-infested area that needed that one particular type of tiers. But guys, it's a tool in the toolbox that works the same, and at a, at a 1,600 home capacity or several hundred acre capacity, it functions very well. And the monies that come in, as long as we keep people appointed to those tiers boards and working that, this is a conservative approach to growth still. And, and it's not picking winners and losers, and it's not doing everything, I'd say behind the dais or in the, in the back room. Everything gets done right out in front of you. And so I, I just wanted to say, like, I disagree that it does nothing. You know, to say like, hey, this doesn't do anything for the community, the sales tax has become more than half of our budget. And, and sales tax is a very important piece to this, this entire apparatus that we're trying to run. And growth is, you know, the old saying, you're either growing or you're dying. Well, man, we're not dying. We're growing. So how do you grow? If we just want to stay static, we never want to grow, guys, we don't, we don't really have any budgetary problems. But if we want to grow and we want to grow in a prosperous way, we're always going to have budgetary problems. You're never going to have enough money to take care of the old and go and install the new, unless you work in different capacities and you use the tools in the toolbox. Muds are an example, tiers is, is an example, some of the economic incentives, 380 agreements, you name it. So still walking that out, I believe we can walk that out in a very conservative light. I bring it back to say I wanted to kind of speak my piece here to it because I didn't feel like we, we did a good job of accurately representing the tiers three last time. And of course, we have a tiers one that is functioning pretty well right now. I don't know too many people that don't feel like Polk Street is doing good and that it's nice downtown and the bar field's great and we all loved watching it on Yellowstone. I, I feel like tiers two is coming along and, and it's got promise and there's a lot of things heading that way. If you knew some of the things that are looking there, you'd be excited just like me. But tiers three hadn't even got going and you're already shooting arrows at it. So all I'm asking is, you know, let us do what you put us up here to do. You said go and fix the problem. And then when we tried, you said, well, not like that. So if you got a better solution, bring it. I'm, I'm, I'd love it. I'm looking for all solutions. This is a good solution, so obviously I've, I've taken a little extra time here to speak on 10A. Want to allow counsel, if you have any comments, and then in favor of approving this annexation.
And I will correct myself, it's 1,046 acres before Matt throws something at me here. It wasn't a few hundred, it's a thousand, so.
Well, it's, it's many acres.
It's many acres.
So, yeah, so 1,000 plus acres.
1,046.
Perfect. Well, we appreciate you, Mr. Griffith, for being here and lending some of the facts.
Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion?
Do I have any further discussion on item 10A? Would request a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 8200, 8200, second.
I have a motion and a second on item 10A. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you guys for letting me speak to that. Item 10B, insurance coverages, who do we have here on staff that'll be bringing this one? Is this Mr. Norman? Welcome, Mitch.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Thank you for your time and consideration of the item that's been presented to you today. Before I introduce Rob Prymore with USI, who's our broker that works with us to secure these coverages, I just wanted to give you all a little bit of background on the item that's been presented to you. So the figure that's represented on the agenda item is made up of multiple lines of coverage. And for those of you that have been on council, you may be familiar with this particular item because it's one that we present to council on an annual basis. The terms of these policies commence on July 1 through July 30 of the following year, so they are annually presented to, to city council. At this point, what I want to do is bring Rod Prymore up. He is from a USI Southwest. That's our broker, like I said, that works with us to secure these coverages. He has a brief presentation where he'll discuss the market, how he goes about securing these coverages, and then he'll be available to answer any questions that you may have of him.
Mayor, Council. Rob Prymore with USI. We're the broker of record for the City of Amarillo. We work alongside with NCW here locally to make sure that we're acting on behalf of the City of Amarillo to procure the best terms at the, the best pricing that the market will bear. So with the presentation, USI, we're a top 10 broker in the U.S. We specialize in public entities. We got over 2,800 public entities across the nation. We got over 100 here in Texas. I attend a lot of city council and county commissioner meetings. So with 2020 was the year that the City of Amarillo moved from a procurement process from an agent C procurement to a broker of record. Most mid to large cities go to this methodology. This allows the broker to maximize what he can do for a public entity in the public entity space. So working together with NCW, we're able to represent and work in a more consultative approach with the City of Amarillo to approach the marketplace, underwrite what terms and conditions the market should bear, and then negotiate on the behalf of the City of Amarillo. Every top 10 broker has a slide that looks like this with all their specialists. These specialists are part of USI and NCW, and they're embedded in the costs that you guys pay as part of the broker fee. Y'all have been able to take advantage of Mike Rogers. He's your claims adjuster advocate. So if anything goes wrong, he basically advocates for the City of Amarillo, so your staff is, does not have to. There's a name up there under property analytics, Jason Woodbury. He was able to go through and we were able to identify that the property insurance limits that you had been buying for a number of years was actually excessive. And through analytical data, we were able to basically lower the total limit of insurance you were buying to make it more appropriate for the possible catastrophes that could happen here, thus saving some of Amarillo dollars that they didn't really need to spend. Presenting the risk board and budget time, I usually go through what the market outlook looks like. The property market, when we came on in 2020, was very hard and difficult with increasing premiums, rising deductibles. Tech, the market is still firm. There is some pockets of softening, but Texas, Louisiana, and Florida are the worst property markets in the country still. So we are seeing some advantage, but it is not a soft market yet. I took this information from the NOAA. This is not insurance information, it's from the National Oceanic Aeronautic Association that gives the weather behavior. And this slide just simply demonstrates that every 10 years, every decade, the number of billion-dollar catastrophes doubles. So, be it as it may, back to Texas, Texas with the hail claims, the wildfire exposures, the different things that Texas is seeing, an uptick in San Antonio just last week, the weather patterns changing are causing difficult renewals. The, the, the market turning here, you guys fortunately have an effective date of July 1. That's to your advantage because that's at the beginning of the hurricane season. Most cities have a renewal at 10-1. That's good ways into the hurricane season, and so if there's hurricanes that hit, those 10-1 effective dates are filling the price increase. You guys are ahead of that, so you don't get the knee-jerk reaction that other cities fill in their budget due to bad hurricane seasons. Also, with that 7-1 effective date prior to 2020, you had over 14 policies scattered all over the map at different months, at different times, with different agents. That's now all consolidated with one agent. This is a culmination of some of the notes that you have in there in the agenda or the agenda item. This is just the overall results. You have a 4% decrease overall. So that's all the different lines of coverage, it's 4% budget decrease. The property coverage decreased by $421,000. So that's a good result. Partly the better result of just the dollars is that we were able to reduce the deductible. Wind and hail deductibles have been driven up year over year with the hard property market. We're able to reduce your deductible from a 5% to a 3%, and we'll show you some of the deductible risk that goes away with us moving that down. And again, just protecting the budget dollars that the City of Amarillo has. Business travel, the rate slightly decreased. The, well, the only premiums that did increase is not due to rate, but is due to the number of fire units that came on for the new fire units. So that premium did increase. And then you had a increase in the excess workers' compensation of 41,000. The excess workers' compensation is not the big spend for workers' comp. The workers' comp spend is in your deductible program that you pay. This is just the smallest sliver of premium that sets on top of that big deductible that you have that is managed here in the city. That premium had a slight increase because your loss ratio is 150% for that excess workers' comp. That sounds like a bad number because that means the insurance carrier's paid out 50% more than what you paid in, but this is all fallback from 2020. Your loss ratio in 2023 was 1,200%. So as the claims that happened in COVID, and due to presumption with first responders, claims across many states increased dramatically. And insurance carriers did not charge rate to be able to pay for those claims because those were new claims coming in due to COVID and the change in presumption laws. So loss ratios went up due to those losses that came onto the, the claims, and then that will tail, tail off as the insurance normalizes those claims and as they come out due to COVID. So if you have another year like you did this year, that number will, the loss ratio of 150% will be well below 100% because the majority of those claims, including the largest claim that you guys had back in 2015 of over 3 million, that is coming off your history. So that number's going to improve. We spoke to the deductible improvement. This is just showing three of your properties and what the wind hail deductible looks like. It's significant due to the hard market with the Civic Center, a wind hail deductible of 5.7 million, under a 5% deductible. We've improved that to 3.4 million. So now that's a deductible risk that is improved 2.3 million on that particular property. Then I show the airport in Hottstown. So we did that all with a premium savings of over 400,000. This is the lines of coverage that are in your proposal and, or in the proposal that show the overall line-by-line item with the percentage to the right with the increase or decrease of those. The vast majority of the property, the improvement was in the property insurance. So if we were to take some directional math and look back at the City of Amarillo moving from the old purchasing process of an agent and bid process, moving to the broker of record, the total savings since 2028 moving to this process has been over $1.8 million to the City of Amarillo. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Council?
Yes. Can you restate the, we had a 1,200% loss rate on workers' comp and then we had 150% this past season?
Yes.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, who's responsible? Is that all for workers' comps on, onsite?
Yeah, that is, that is workers' comp claims, but it is not anything that the City of Amarillo has done wrong. It is merely the fact that the COVID claims came in from first responders, so now all of a sudden those claims ticked up. So now all of a sudden your losses go bad that were never actuarially forecasted for. And then the presumption laws changed where first responder claims became much more broad, and that devastated a lot of cities because now first responders were able to put in claims that were much more liberal, so to speak. And so that upticked the, the, the loss ratio for everybody. So what the City of Amarillo does as far as safety, fantastic. Keep doing that and your loss ratio will normalize because now those claims are tapering out because now all the physical therapy, the medical costs, those things that happen over five, six, seven years, 10 years, they fall out and they attrish as the people get better. And so that's.
Council, can, can I expand upon that real quick, maybe just for our new council members? We, we have talked about this a lot during budget, and so those of you that are new, back during COVID, I think to his point was the, the state law, I believe, changed that state. COVID, I think to his point was the state law, I believe, changed that stated that if a public safety, a sworn public safety member had a, I say that, some sort of impairment or death related to COVID, it automatically was covered under workers' comp. They like retroactively went and changed that. And so unfortunately, during that time period, we actually experienced three deaths in our police force related to COVID. And so because of that, we had to essentially, it was a very, very large sum of money that we had to essentially accrue, that we have to pay out over several years related to that. We do not anticipate that. So it was, I hate to say it, it was more of an anomaly. And so I do agree, our experience looks really bad going back to those years, but that's not, those were not normal circumstances. We, I don't know that we anticipate anything, hopefully anything like that going forward. I think our regular, normal workers' comp claims are trending very well.
Yes.
And actually have been improving, I think, over the last few years. It was just during that COVID time period, and it was related to state law changes.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that. Just, do we have an EMR or TRIR calculation yet or for less? A normalized, what would that look like?
Well, typically, normal is going to be a 1.0.
Right.
Now, with the excess workers' comp, it's not going to be the same modifier calculation. So I would have to look at that, but if it's, we're at 150, so it's going to be about a 150, 1.5.
What would it have been before COVID? What were we trending before COVID in this 150?
I picked this up in 2020 as the broker of record, so I don't have that information.
Thank you.
I could probably get that for you, Councilman, if you wanted it. Did the actuarial data change on your projections moving forward, or are you just seeing the attrition going down based on just health and wellness of the staff?
Health and wellness of the staff with your city and all cities, because this was, when you say it's not normal, it was normal for all cities. All cities' loss ratio deteriorated greatly due to the fact that no one was forecasting these.
So none of your data reflects an actuarial change in expectations other than, like, the actuary data across the board nationwide looks better?
The only thing that I can say, actuarial, I don't have the statistic, but I just know that the largest claim from 2015 over $3 million is going to fall off for the next policy period. So that will be promulgated in the go-forward. I would need to get closer to the next year's renewal before I can have some data on that. I can directionally give you estimates, but again, depending on your claim experience between now and then, that could change.
Well, good presentation. Council, you have something?
I think Don.
Yeah, so I've got a question for you. So I love the reduction in premiums. That's great, the reduction in exposure to us, you know, with the reduced deductible. My question is, and maybe you guys do this, I hope you do, typically what we see in that is, you know, something else has changed in the policy, either an exclusion or an endorsement, specifically in the wind and hail thing, of you maybe a depreciated roof endorsement. You know, now, you know, we're seeing a reduction in premiums, I mean, because this, again, this is great, but it's like there's a part of me that doesn't trust it. It's like, what else changed? And I'll tell you, I'm an insurance agent, so I get it. But what I usually see is that something in the policy actually changed as well when we can reduce a premium and, but the coverage changed, right? Maybe we are now depreciating your roof where before we were RCV every time, right? We're paying you whatever it takes to replace. Has any of that happened? I mean, I know industry-wide, that's kind of where we're going is, we're not really paying replacement cost anymore. We're doing our best, the insurance company's doing its best to reduce its exposure to keep premiums lower.
You know better than anybody that the insurance industry is out of the roof finance business. And so any roof that's over 20 years old, ACV. It's not out of the, the change in the terms and conditions in this particular, we have 12 different carriers because there's a quota share program. So it requires 12 different insurance companies to get you the proper insurance that you need. The only thing that changed is the participants in those, the same terms and conditions with blanket limit, with replacement, with other things that we build up that are specific to public entities based off of our expertise. So we're not taking away any, you know, it's the devil in the detail with insurance, and this is why it's unpopular is because it feels like there's a takeaway.
Sure.
The takeaway in this is nothing that is bad for the city. The takeaway is the soft market that we're taking advantage of and your good loss history over the past, and are leveraging against them to get that deduction in both the deductible and the premium itself. There is no diminution of coverage.
Super unusual. I mean, you have to agree, that's really odd.
That's why the insurance market on the large property is cresting and turning soft. And so you guys are at the beginning, like I said, before hurricane season kicks in. And so large accounts, anybody who has a median to small business on your property insurance, it's not going down anytime soon. But the large side is starting to crest, and we're seeing some of that premium savings. So many of my cities, counties, school districts are going to see some savings.
Okay, so we did not see a reduction in coverage in any way? Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilman?
The cyber liability, what does that cover?
Cyber liability, I don't know if we have enough time to go on, but it's a big topic. Fortunately, your IT staff is one of the best in most cities I deal with. Cyber liability is going to be anybody who winds up ransom, extortion, exfiltration, infiltration, invoice manipulation. We have claims for cities, counties, school districts that are very, very significant where a bad actor will get into your system and shut you down. You'll call the FBI. The FBI will come in and do their best to assist you, but typically the results are not spectacular. They've improved from where they were five years ago, but I have story after story, and I deliver a cyber presentation to staff to show how vulnerable you are as a city because you are only as good as your least educated employee who goes online, who plugs in a USB into your system. So your IT, Farner, one of the better IT groups I've seen in cities. But again, employee education will prevent you from being the local entity that's in the newspaper, because I always say it's going to be the school district, the county, or the city. So keep your employees well-trained, keep your IT very engaged so that y'all don't wind up with a cyber event like the City of El Paso they got to do for $3.8 million. Like Los Cruces ISD, who got hacked, they called the FBI. The FBI said, don't pay the ransom. They were taking role in issuing payroll checks to their staff for three months. They were without computers. So that's what could happen to a public entity. You could be shut down.
And then what does that coverage, I mean, what is the cost? Obviously, I know there's a cost associated with it. Is it business loss? Is it?
The premium's $58,073. There's different limits within the policy, a million for liability. Of course, as a city, we have certain torque caps. We get to enjoy that, what, leniency with the potential liability. But the exposure for a city is first-party coverage. First-party coverage is all that you have to do to notify constituents here. If you had the water department, fill in the department that takes any kind of payment, if you have to notify, set up credit monitoring. If they've moved out of state, they, so if you take all your constituents that function within the water, you tag on what the potential cost of credit monitoring, notification. Every state has a different, 50 different states have 50 different laws because the federal government has not legislated any kind of federal regulation, and it is very costly. So let's do, there's a number of things that the cyber liability, extortion, ransom, invoice manipulation. Invoice manipulation is a big one because you do business with your accounts payable, may have a regular transaction that happens. All of a sudden, someone that they know and deal with gets an email. That email looks regular, sounds regular, says, hey, we changed our banking. Here's a W-9. Here's the information. Please send it here. Call the 1-800 number. They call the 1-800 number, somebody answers it, they send that money to the wrong place, and now a bad actor has whatever that payment might be. That's what happened to the City of El Paso for $3.8 million.
And then, that's all I've got. Thank you.
It's a good question. Any other questions, Council?
I talked to cyber at length because I worked with the FBI Cyber Task Force for for education.
So on the extortion, when, I mean, a ransom, do municipalities, governments, do they often pay that? Does it work?
I'm on record here. So time and time again, I have delivered conference speeches on the topic. When I first started delivering the speech with the FBI, with Cyber Task Force, with the group of businesses, with the group of public entities, they literally said, if this building burns to the ground, you have a blueprint. You can go back and rebuild this building. If you are locked out of your computer systems with no backups, because everybody says, oh, we just have backups, you can't always go to your backups because they could be in your backups. They can pull that information out and dump it on their own servers. How do you rebuild all that data? So what the FBI agent said to the group is, it's a business decision that you must make. The, if you pay the ransom, those bad actors will release your information. Because as ransom criminals, if they don't do exactly what they say they're going to do, every other ransom ring is going to come at them. It's kind of the rules of the unlawful, the bad actors. So they will release your information. They'll put a backdoor in, so you better get somebody to clean it up. If you don't pay them, they will crash your system. So if you pay them, they'll do what they say. In comes James Comey years later. They decided it's against public policy. They start telling people, we're not sure if you'll get your information, so we recommend you don't pay them because we're not guaranteeing that you will. That's when we started seeing couple, here in Texas, the Coppell Police Department, they had a ransom attack. They called themselves, they called the FBI, they reported this. They didn't pay the ransom. They lost eight years' worth of investigation material. Murderers, assault and battery, rapists, you name it. They wish they had that data back. They wish they had paid those bad actors. So I say it's a business decision. The administration has come out time and time again to try to put teeth into public policy, saying, don't pay the bad actors. I recommend to my clients, some of them who have had upward in the public, in the private sector of $8 million claims, pay the ransom, get your IT forensic people and our IT forensic people, and get it cleaned up so there's no more backdoor. Because we've had companies that have been hit multiple times because they depended or relied on their own IT folks.
Thank you.
Well, great presentation, lots of information. Appreciate your hard work, sir.
It's been great working with the city, and y'all have done a great job.
Well, thank you. Item 10B is up for consideration.
I move to approve item 10B as presented.
Second?
I have a motion and a second on item 10B. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Okay, moving into item 10C. Thank you, Mitch, as well. Ms. Owens, are you going to walk us through this one? Okay, you've got an audit services agreement we're going to discuss.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Today I am bringing you audit services for consideration. I am Katrina Owens, Director of Finance. For the last few years, we have been using a smaller local firm. That contract is coming to an end, and so the questions need to be asked, is this still the best fit for us as the city continues to grow? Rotating is always a good option to look at every few years. So those questions started being asked when we went out for procurement, starting in April, for a request for qualifications. Now, I want to remind you, an RFQ does not look at pricing during the bidding process. We received eight bids in total. Now, the scoring committee was the Chief Financial Officer, myself, and the Deputy Director of Finance. Now, this is for a five-year term with an addition for a one-year extension. The high score was received by Clifton Marson Allen. Now, the size of CLA puts them as a top 10 firm. Now, a top 10 firm or a large firm is going to have a resource advantage. They're going to have staffing, knowledge, experience, and time resources that a smaller firm will not be able to provide. Now, this city audit consists of the annual comprehensive financial report and then nine component units. And then this audit will be mostly remote. Now, we have been mostly remote since COVID, so we are prepared for that. We will start this audit next month, and then that will run for a full year through July or August of next year. And I want to remind you that the city actver will present to you by March. We have asked internal audit to leave the communications for the audit with the auditors. Now, CLA was able to meet our budgetary needs and came in at a 3% increase over prior year actual numbers, and that 455,505 is for all 10 audits. And then 1.5% increase over the next four years. And I do want to note that that's a 35% decrease discount for CLA for their pricing. Now, I do have two principals for CLA with us today. I have Scott Krasznik and then Jerry McMillan. And if we have any questions, I'd like to introduce you to them.
Yeah, I think we will.
What questions can we?
Hey, good afternoon, guys. So is it Scott and Jerry?
Yes.
Okay.
Scott Krasznak. I'm a principal with CLA, focused exclusively on state and local government audits. I've been practicing public accounting 36 years now, and over the duration of that 36 years, the first three years was not in state and local government, but the last 33 have been. And that's all I do with CLA. And a couple of things I wanted to expand on, on what Katrina said. The proposed fees that we came up with, that she presented on one of the slides, that we worked to get those fees within the city's budget. And in order to get the fees there, those represent a 35% discount of our standard hourly rate. So it was a significant discount from our standard rates to get the fees within the budget of the City of Amarillo.
Go ahead, I'm sorry if you had something else.
No, I was just going to introduce myself. Jerry McMillan. So I'm the managing principal for the North Dallas practice. So I'm in our Dallas location, Fort Worth, manage those offices. And so my role is really supporting the team and being part of the greater team for the City of Amarillo.
Councilman, you have a few questions?
I just, so y'all gave us a 35% discount off your normal rate?
Correct.
Why? Just to win the bid?
I'll take this one. So I mean, you know, I'll just tell you what it is. I mean, we all have, we have standard hourly rates. All firms do. All firms give discounts off those standard rates. And it's just a matter of where you go in. We know our target, and we know what the profitability, we want to get on an engagement. And so North Texas, our average on everything's probably about a 20, 25% discount. I mean, some we get, some things you get 100% on, some things you don't. It just depends on what you're doing.
Okay.
And Jerry, could you expand on, you guys, I think, mentioned earlier that you have several clients here in Amarillo, Texas. So y'all are pretty familiar with doing business here locally. Is that correct?
Yes. So I know Les will know this because we were on the United Way Board many years back. I grew up, went to WT, and actually practiced in Amarillo for 20 years before I got relocated to Austin for a year and a half and to Dallas. But so, but as a firm, we have some very, some significant accounts here in Amarillo. I don't remember the total number.
It was approximately 90.
About 90 different accounts that we serve that are here in the Amarillo area.
Any that you can share?
I prefer not because we have a confidentiality side of it, and I don't know who we have the releases from.
And so where's your headquarters at?
So CLA does not have a headquarters. So our leadership teams are across the U.S. So we're, we have 90 or 120 locations in probably, I don't know, most states, probably, I think it's 30 states or so. In Texas, we have Dallas and Fort Worth, Austin, San Antonio, and Houston, and then to the some else where we're coast to coast. But we don't, I would say our, if you go back in history, the quote headquarters was Minneapolis. But currently, our CEO is in Charlotte. Our chief operating officer is in St. Louis. So we have people spread all over. Our board directors are from all over, all locations.
So you're saying most of this would be remote, meaning you wouldn't, you wouldn't be here, you know, in Amarillo performing the audit? You're, most of the data is sent electronically, and you guys do the audit?
Right. So the process really, and I'm going to let Scott add into this, but the process, we use a tool called AIE. So it's a secured portal system that we kind of... So it's a secured portal system that we kind of, we end up putting the request list in. So it's a great communication tool. It eliminates confusion about sending emails. It's all secure. So we can have staff working remotely as things were uploaded. Now, as we talked earlier today with some staff, we still, we still plan on being onsite some. I think it's the right practice on any audit because I'm an auditor by nature as well, to be onsite, to have those questions and have those discussions. So we will be onsite some. That'll be worked out with, with the team. But most of the stuff, there's no reason for us to sit here. I always tell people, there's no reason for us to take space looking at a bank rec that's been loaded up electronically, that I'm putting in electronically and somebody sitting at the computer typing in notes or signing off on things. They can do that somewhere else and that saves cost, a great deal of cost for the city by not having all that out of pocket.
So I, I know it's presented and I don't know where it came from, but you know, y'all are top 10. Based on what? What does that mean? Size, volume?
It's revenue.
Just revenue? Okay. So top 10 in the nation?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Ms. Owens, tell us a little bit about why you and the other two members valued this one and why this is your recommendation?
We had a list of about 21 questions that we went through on each proposal. CLA received in 98.6, I believe, on all the questions. We're looking at governments, the questions. They do about 1,600 grants for federal and state per year. That's the largest in the country. They also are on Workday as well. So our new system, they are using it as well. So there is a language that we can communicate with. It, it was just a really good fit.
Okay. And do we have any experience with your firm in any other capacities? I know you've got a, a tie here and maybe a personal connection, but I didn't know if maybe staff had used them.
We have not worked with them before. We just, we know Jerry, but we have not.
And any of the other applicants that were RFQ, did you have any others that, that you felt like offered anything different? Or did you feel like it was all pretty black and white?
I mean, we did have the local firm present as well. They did not have as strong of resource because they're on the same system was very big for us, being able to communicate all of, would you?
Yeah, I can weigh in a little bit. So I think one thing that we've seen over the last several years, as the city of Amarillo continues to grow and get somewhat more complex, we have potentially started outgrowing some of the ability for our local firms to audit an entity of our size in a timed manner that we need. And so we had a great relationship with our existing audit firm and they have done a phenomenal job for us. We are continuing to grow and I think one thing that I saw from the proposals was, I think the larger firms had additional staffing capabilities that could help us and work with our internal team in order to make sure we're meeting deadlines and still allowing our team to get their day in, day out work done as well.
Okay. Councilman? The 455 price for 2025, 2026 is what, 2%, 3% higher?
That is a 3% over prior year actuals.
Okay, so we're not seeing a large change.
We're not seeing a large change.
Thank you.
So just a few other questions on, on my end and then would like to talk about the contract and the way it's being led. So for you guys, you know, what, that $450,000, what's your expectation? Help me understand, how many hours are you budgeting for, for that audit? What are you anticipating going through? Do you include any single audits in that amount of money? If so, how do you perform that in a sampling? And what should we expect, you know, at the end of the year?
Well, that's a really good question. Total number of hours and I've got a detail of all that. I've shared that with Katrina, who shared it with Laura. They're welcome to share that information with you if you want that in the future. But the total number of hours we came up with to perform the audits, 10 individual audits, largest obviously city of Amarillo, eight component units, either discreetly presented component units or blended component units. And then one other entity, the library consortium that doesn't get blended into the financial statements of the city of Amarillo, but that's included. In addition to the 10 audits, there are two agreed upon procedures engagements, one of which is with the hospital district on the tobacco settlement, and one of which is a HUD agreed upon procedures. And then there is also an examination agreement related to the TCEQ compliance. So a total of 13 engagements. Hours for all 13 of those engagements, we came up with 3,175 hours to complete those engagements.
Yeah, that's a great breakdown. Thank you for that. That really helps kind of set the expectation. Ms. Owens, were you going to say something?
I was just going to say that the amount of hours is very similar to prior years.
Okay. So we, we feel like numbers are, are good.
It's in line, yes.
Okay. And then if we, if we had something, we would pay in addition to this? If we, if you found a, something peculiar, an oddity, you would perform a singular audit, would we be looking at $50,000?
It would depend on that, the amount of hours projected and then the cost per hour.
Okay. And go ahead, sir.
One thing I did want to ask, I didn't address, part of your question was the single audit, number of major programs related to the single audit. Based on what we have seen from the prior year, we are anticipating or estimating six major federal and state programs. And in addition to that is the passenger facility charge audit as well. So seven programs in addition to that are part of the 3,175 hours.
Do you have that included in the 450?
That's included in the 455, exactly.
So I think staff and you guys would concur, it's a very comprehensive quote. You feel like you've got everything stipulated the direction that we would want to go. Your company is great to perform a single audit at the request of council if we saw something or if you saw something, you'd bring it.
One thing I did want to expand on there, Clifton Larson Allen, commonly referred to as CLA, we actually perform the single audit for the state of Texas. We do the single audit for all of the federal programs of the state of Texas. That's one of the very large engagements we do there. And I, far and wide across all the offices Jerry had mentioned, CLA audits over 1,000 municipal entities, over 300 cities. And in your proximity here, the closest city, the size of the city of Amarillo or larger, CLA also audits the city of Albuquerque, New Mexico, that actually is closer mileage wise than Fort Worth.
Well, it sounds like you're, you're definitely the direction we're going and what we're looking for. I appreciate staff for going out for this, pulling together a solid RFQ. My question, and I would want to know if it, if it bothered you or if it caused you any, any hardship. You know, they only elect us for two years at a time, so we only get a two-year contract and then you get a renewal every two years. This is a five-year agreement under the precedent of, hey, it's good to allow rotation when it's needed. And so would your firm be interested if we, if we were to modify the agreement to a two-year contract with three one-year options? Would that, would that cause you any issues for what you've quoted and, and still looking at us as a, as a good customer?
Let me answer that this way. So technically, yeah, it's a five-year contract, but it's, it's still a renewal annually. So we, we, you'd have the option. So in two years, y'all said, hey, we don't want to do this anymore. We want to go a different direction. You have that option.
So and the, the specific reason I asked for that, Scott, right? Or no, Jerry?
Jerry.
Jerry. Not committing future councils and not knowing what this looks like. If a future council came and, you know, it was, it was, well, sorry, we can't touch that one for another three years. Like this is what we have if they were seeing something different or going a different direction. So that's good. I think that changes it. So this is a, this is a, this is a five-year commitment with one-year option outs.
Yeah, so, so technically, so what we call the statement of work, those are an annual statement of work that'll get signed every year. The master service agreement, yes, that will go for this five, six-year period. But then the statement of works will be renewed annually. And that's where the fees, if there's any scope changes, you know, any significant changes.
But the master agreement's easy. If a future council sat down and said, hey, we want to put this back up for RFQ, you guys understand? And you would resubmit and, and it would be their option at year three or four or five.
Yeah, and I will say that my preference is to have the agreement as we have, knowing that that's out there. Because honestly, if I look at it and we look at the fees, we look at the term of the contract and look at the overall revenue stream and investment and how we're going to do over a period, obviously six years is better than two years to, you know, kind of do that analysis on. Because anytime you're doing an audit, year one, I'll tell you right now, we'll take more than a 35% discount in year one. And so having those extra years to where there are better years from a total hours perspective in an engagement, that's how this works from a fee quote for annual period.
Yeah, and I definitely understand the heavy liftings on the front end. You know, once you get used to seeing the data, you've got it plugged in, you develop the relationship. I'm sure it's more efficient. However, I know being on this side of the dais, it's important to have fresh eyes and a new look and, and the ability to rotate. I think we, we as a council didn't have any issues with CMMS and their performance are always super informative. They answered every question. They, they showed up and did their job. I just think it was the length at which we had had them incorporated inside of, of the city finances. It, it was the request to put it up for RFQ just for that due diligence. And so I, I think what I'm understanding doesn't cause me any issue. You know, it's, it's a master agreement, but it's renewed on an annual basis. Okay. Any other questions for these two gentlemen? No? Okay. Hey, thank you guys for being here and the presentation. Ms. Owens, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Item 10C is entertain a motion.
I move to award the agreement for auditing services to Clifton Larson and Allen.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second from place three. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Item 10D, North Heights Two-Inch Water Line, Mr. Danforth.
Mayor, Council, I want to start out by thanking Mr. Allen for his compliment, but I think the compliment really needs to go to the Utilities Department and the CP and D Department, working together on this, really assessing the need and moving forward as quickly as they have on that. So I, I do want to give credit where credit's due and I do appreciate his compliment earlier. The North Heights Two-Inch Water Line replacement, you as council made this a priority to get this addressed, really at the speed at which we've moved on this, I think is, is admirable in working with both departments. This is a construction contract to abandon the existing two-inch water lines and replace with new six-inch water pressure pipe, including almost two miles of six-inch water line installed via horizontal drilling method. 300 linear foot of six-inch line installed via open cut. And then you're looking at abandonment and abandonment in place of the existing two-inch lines. This next bullet point is important because as we go forward, you'll realize that this was done due to accomplish the most density, density of service that we could provide with the funding that we have available. So we're, we're looking at 221 service reconnections as we move forward on this. This is funded through the Water and Sewer Fund revenues. The map here shows you some of the locations and, and when you look at that, you can see the lots density as far as the residences. There is also some existing six, eight, and 20-inch lines that we're connecting to out there to increase the pressures in those areas. Here's some, here's another map of some of the other areas that will be addressed through that as well. And the, the two north-south lines that will be addressed. The work will primarily take place in the alleys. Dumpsters will be relocated to accommodate trash services. Staff will be coordinating with the residents on those relocations as we get started. Construction is to be completed with one, within 100 total working days, in essence, five, five months of work, weather permitting. So we, we feel pretty good about that time, timeline. Traffic is not anticipated to be affected and I say that great, I want to add to that greatly. We are going to affect traffic when we're doing the tie-ins at the intersections of the alleys, but it will be limited. Contract was selected through the RFP process. We used price, contractor qualifications, and the city did receive three proposals on this, on this RFP. The highest evaluated vendor was Turkey Creek for the total amount of the million two eight. Construction to be completed within 100 days. Turkey Creek was also the lowest priced vendor that put force to the proposal. So for what we have for you, we're looking at a recommendation for the award of this contract. I'd be happy to take any additional questions.
Questions for Mr. Danforth.
Hey Jerry, what, what were those lines, the existing lines? What are they? What are they? What type lines are they?
They're, they're, they're two-inch, they're two-inch steel lines for the most part. And so what we're looking at, we were having issues with those. And, and historically, some of those lines have already been replaced to date. And so we refer to this as phase one because it's a greater scale project, but those were replaced by the Utilities Department basically on a maintenance basis.
Okay. So I'm guessing the pressure varies. I mean, just depending on the condition of the line and that type deal.
It absolutely does. What we're looking at, this not only enhances as far as water pressure service to those areas, but also for emergency services as far as the fire department having lines that are big enough to carry the water that would be needed to fight a fire in that scenario.
Okay. That's great. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Danforth, you feel like $1.2 million, you know, that's 600,000 per mile, let's say in this, right? Is that an average?
In the morning. I'm sorry?
Can we factor that in looking down the road and kind of budgeting? You know, is, is that a pretty good going rate? Half a million a mile?
I think in some scenarios, the answer to that is yes, but in some scenarios, absolutely not. Because what we're looking at in a lot of these alleys, they're not paved alleys. We, we've got different scenarios when we get into another area where we might have paving issues or we might have more landscape issues. All of that's going to affect those numbers going forward. It's a good basis number to look at, but I wouldn't hang my hat on that depending on the scenario.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Danforth? Entertain a motion.
I move to approve item 10D as presented.
Second.
Have motion and a second, all in favor of item 10D. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Moving on to item 10E, CVB. We have Ms. Johnny coming up here. We need to place, how many board members? Just the one?
Just the one council member.
Okay. Go ahead and walk us into that, Johnny, if you would.
So we just have one vacancy on the CVB for a council member as stated in the ordinance, and we are just looking for one of you guys to fill that seat.
So I did text Cashin earlier, just in full transparency, and said, who would you like to work with? You know, figuring she would probably say me, of course. And she texted me two names, well, preferably this guy, but if not him, then him. And I said, well, is there anybody else? And she said, well, then this other guy. And so everybody's name was texted except mine. I didn't know if there was a reason for that or...
You're a busy man.
Oh, I see.
Oh, I see.
You're a busy man, so.
No.
None of the rest of us are. We all kinds of time.
I, I utilize enough of, of the mayor's time as it is. Um, I do want to say one thing before y'all start discussion on this. We, just for full, uh, disclosure, we are, as of this week, starting our master plan. If you'll remember, a few months ago, y'all approved that out of our reserves. We held off on starting that because of festival activities and travel with the staff. We want everybody engaged in that process. It's about six months. So, my hope is whoever takes this role would actually, um, be able to engage very well in that. I don't expect them to be a part of all the meetings, but it may call for an extra meeting, um, during some of these months, during the six-month period. But also to be engaged in a way that if we have requests that need to go back through council, that you're, you're engaging in the right conversations to be able to help me, um, carry that message forward.
Well, I, I know you know this, but it, it's always nice to be able to, to repeat it and reiterate it. And I want everybody else to know, like, your team, uh, is doing a fantastic job. Uh, if you go down on Sixth Street for the Route sixty-six festival, you'd swear there's thirty or forty people that you, you employ, and there's one.
There's ten of us.
There's ten of you.
We did nine, ten events in ten days.
You guys do a great job. You run a, a very, I mean, it's a good team. They enjoy what they're doing. Uh, you're doing really well. We, we've been supportive, but you've been the one really leading it and doing it all. And then if you look at like twenty-twenty-six, and I'm really kind of selling this for somebody to volunteer for.
I'll do it. Just stop. I'll do it.
The Corn Fairy Tour that's coming in twenty-six, and the Hundred Year Anniversary of Route sixty-six. So, it's gonna be a fun year.
Yep.
And so, um, Don says he'll do it, but I didn't know if Tim wanted to, you know, like, talk him out of it, or... Don's in, I think.
Don's in?
Yeah.
I mean, I, yeah, I don't, I, I, I think we align with a lot of things that we've done.
I think we balanced the coin as well on, on things, so I, I would love that. Yes.
Okay. Well, uh, I think it's... Yeah, I, I, well, I'm not gonna tell you who she texted first, so. It just wasn't me. So, I just, you know.
Took it personal.
Uh-huh. Uh, Cashin, thanks again for all you do. Uh, man, we'll, we'll be glad to have Don on that, and then let him report back. And, um, we'll get back with staff on doing some of these updates. We've gotten away from it with all things politics, so we do want to do, you know, uh, council member serving on outside boards again, putting a few of those back on the agenda. And so, look forward to getting you back in here, and y'all take off, keep going, let us know what you need.
Thank you.
Um, would need a motion for that appointment, Council.
I, I'm not motion myself.
I, I move to appoint Don Tips to the Amarillo Convention and Visitors Bureau Board Member.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Can you handle that workload? I mean, I know the Audit Committee's really time-consuming with your annual meeting. Can you take on the additional responsibility?
Now, it's a...
I think I can squeeze it in. Okay, good. Just wanted to check.
The annual meeting, though, is a long meeting.
Yes. Okay, what, yes, okay. That book is about that thick, Les, just so you know.
Moving along, item ten F, Beautification and Public Arts Advisory Board Members. So, Ms. Johnny?
Same thing. We are seeking a, to fill a vacancy left by a city council member for the Beautification and Public Arts Advisory Board.
So, let me, let me give one thing that I would like to just bring up. This is a newer board that was started, it has a specific goal. At the time, I think it's by ordinance that we placed a council member on it.
Still is.
And so, it's still by ordinance that we have a council member serve on this. Um, I did reach out to, to Josh Kraft, um, and I said, hey, how, how are you doing? He said, well, you know, honestly, Parks and Rec was a big one for me, and I really, uh, felt like that was, that was where I was needed. Um, he said, as far as beautification, that, that board does really well. And he, he didn't feel like a council member, uh, was needed, uh, in his opinion. He said, you know, I mean, it might be a good one to sub out and go ahead and ratchet that one down to a citizen, um, get another volunteer. You know, I mean, um, we've got people that have ran for office, they want to serve, we'd like to get them serving. Uh, I would like to ask council, i- it's really up to you guys. You know, if you want a council member serving on this, and if we have somebody who would like to serve on this, uh, but if not, then, you know, we could direct staff, you would have to change the ordinance, um, in order to allow a citizen to serve, but we could do that fairly simply. And you would be doing that at the advisement of, uh, you know, Councilmember Kraft, who, uh, I mean, he always, he, he's always solid in everything he did. So, um, I kind of thought that might be the way to go, just cause I don't, I don't think that Advisory Board Committee necessarily needs a council member serving on it to, to report back. And I think it, it opens up another opportunity to get some good community input, put some people to work. Discussion on that?
I would agree.
Agreed?
Yep.
Any, any issues? Anybody pushback on that? Or, let me say this, anybody want to serve? Like, this is really where my heart is, and I've been looking forward to getting on that, and, cause if not, then, um, you know, I mean, just cause you're sitting back there, uh, Mr. Perez, Nunez here, like, uh, you know, we, we could put this up and, and nominate a, a few. Or maybe Hope. I see Hope over there, too, so. Okay. Um, Council, would we have a direction? Do you guys see the, the benefit in, in moving this back to a citizen?
Well, in the establishment of it, and I don't know who may have been here, I mean, was there a particular reason why a council member was on it, or it just?
I think it's just preference at the time. I don't think there's a particular reason.
How long has this been in, been around?
This, this board came about when they did the Parks Master Plan, and there was a Beautification and Public Arts Plan as a part of that. And so, back then, for the council at the time, that was a very big focus. Um, and there were some, some goals for this, for this committee, and I believe that's why they had a council member on it originally.
Yeah, and I think those goals, uh, man, they, they had a vision, they put together a good team, they've, they've walked it out, it's doing very well. And, and you see it around town, and it's very visible. And, and so, I did reach out to Matt Morgan, uh, just by a text, and I said, hey, you may be thinking, if there's anybody that you know would like to serve on this, if council chooses, not to put a council member, um, could you refer? And he said, yes. So, uh, if you guys are okay, I would like to see if we could give direction back to staff, bring the ordinance back with the change. We would update that ordinance and have a nomination at the time for a citizen name.
Okay.
Any, any pushback on that, guys? You good with that?
That's a good plan.
Okay, so, we're, we're just gonna, uh, take no action on ten F with that direction, if you guys are good. Okay? All right. Item ten F, we'll take no action. Moving forward, item ten G, uh, Community Development.
This board vacancy is more of an at-large vacancy. Um, we did accept applications, and we have received an application that you were provided last Friday, I believe. Um, this Community Development Advisory Committee, I think Jason Riddlesberger could probably provide more information.
We'll get Jason up here and let us... Uh, how many applicants did you have, Johnny?
We just had one application.
Oh, okay. Jason?
Yes. So, uh, the Advisory Committee is, uh, basically, the, we've got, uh, folks that will, uh, give us, uh, information as far as our public services. We've kind of worked, worked that into city, uh, code. Uh, whenever we go through our, uh, CDBG, uh, funding, they will give us recommendations on the applications we get for public services. So, it's, it's not a big role. Uh, we, we do like to use them to get feedback, a lot of community, uh, input and that kind of thing, so we use them as a sounding board for those kinds of things. The, uh, young lady that did apply, I thought her application looked fantastic. She's, uh, recent to the, uh, community and really wants to get involved, so I thought she looked really fantastic. I think she'd fit in great with the group we've gotten.
Really good. Um, so, you know, I, I noticed that the, the applicant's an attorney. Uh, does that help you to have an attorney on that board?
I think it does, yeah.
With a lot of what you deal with?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Um, okay. And, and, Ms. Hope, I see you in the back, and, and you did raise your hand.